Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, July 24, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. We'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to Chris Black of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item four this evening, there's nothing under general. Moving on to item five, committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondents this evening? Seeing no committee correspondents, moving on to public comment. Item six on the agenda, up first, we have Tom Donnelly. And again, for those wishing to come up and speak, please speak your name and address into the record, and then please keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you very much, Tom Donnelly with Hep Energy. I'm a resident of Gorham. Wanted to speak to you this evening on chapter 180, the solar energy ordinance, which is currently on the docket for tonight. Honorable mayor, members of the council, today I stand before you with a sense of gratitude, extending my thanks to the planning director and their exceptional team for their dedication in crafting a revised solar ordinance that is balanced and fair. Over the past few months, we have had the privilege of collaborating closely with the city of Saco's planning department in shaping this ordinance. I would like to express my sincere appreciation to city planner Emily Cole Prescott, Assistant Director Shannon Chisholm, Councillor Burnham, and City Engineer Joe Levier. Their efforts and positive input has been instrumental in driving this important initiative forward. The issuance of a solar moratorium in April was unexpected and certainly caught us off guard, especially given our recent communications with the city over the past three years and being on the cusp of submitting a proposal. Nevertheless, I must commend city planner Prescott and her team for embracing the challenge with determination, embarking on a thorough discovery process related to commercial-scale solar. Their commitment to conducting a site visit to the Sanford Airport Solar Project and seeking input from industry experts underscored a genuine commitment to finding the best solutions for the city of Saco. Throughout this collaborative journey, we have engaged in two in-person meetings and multiple email exchanges, sharing our insights and suggestions. Our objective as developers was not only to draw from our expertise in solar energy, but also to offer a holistic viewpoint that would serve the best interests of the city for unknown future stakeholders interested in solar energy initiatives. As a city planner, Emily Cole Prescott carries the critical responsibility of envisioning the city's future, ensuring that the development aligns with the needs of your community. In this regard, she has exhibited true professionalism and an openness to considering industry input, even when it initially seemed to challenge the proposed ordinance language. Through constructive dialogue and her thorough review, the new language that emerged fully captures the essence and spirits of the original ordinance while incorporating the strength of existing regulations. In conclusion, I want to thank the city administrators and all those involved in the process. Your commitment to creating a forward-thinking, comprehensive solar ordinance sets a powerful example for other communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Kay Porter.
Hello, my name is Kathy Porter. I live at 13 Ocean Greens Drive in Strawberry Fields, that's Ward 4. Lived there for 15 years, since its beginning. My topic tonight is LD 2003. I requested a neighborhood Q and A through mic of Emily Cole Prescott because we need to understand better what this means, specifically to us. And I hope that you all will support that request and our diligence in trying to understand this better. The demand for affordable housing and available housing is real. I get it. We get it in our neighborhood. I know as a town council, you've heard this once, if not a thousand times, "Not my backyard." But I never, in my wildest imagination, thought that the solution would be in my backyard and my neighbors' backyards. LD 2003 seems like a fairy tale to me, at best. At worst, it seems that it will end up being very costly for the town of Saco. We've read the law, the guidance, the draft of the zoning, but as residents, we're still confused. We don't get it. We'd like a bottom-up explanation, not a top-down. What specifically does it mean to us? We want to understand the law. We want to understand the zoning revisions, but most importantly, we want to understand the impact to our infrastructure, the city's infrastructure. We know it's supposed to be absorbable, but I don't have much faith that it is going to be. I don't know. I've worked with the growth within Strawberry Fields, and I've seen it all. I've seen developers who rob Peter to pay Paul, and I'm not sure about the feasibility of the finances in this. So I'd like to understand better. I ask you to please support our need for this Q and A, and I also ask you to please proceed with caution and due diligence as we move to approve the zoning laws. I understand the laws there, where the zoning has to comply and figure it out, and I know how hard that's been. But that's not the only thing. I'd like to see the feasibility studies. What are my neighborhood going to look like? 150 residents, 150 homeowners in five years, when you have 450 people dwellings and you have 150 landlords? So, thank you. I appreciate it, and I ask of you, let's get this right before it's signed, sealed, and delivered. Thank you.
Up next is Daniel Ingram.
Good evening. Thank you for meeting with me, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little underdressed this evening. I've been in manholes. I've been at the bottom of Goose Fairbrook. I have been inside of pump stations. I have been breathing downwind a foul, wretched odor for five years straight. I've had enough. I can't do it anymore.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Daniel Bryce Ingram. I live at 705 Portland Road in Saco, Maine, otherwise known as Silver Springs Campground and Cottage since 1932. I am, my brother and my wife, own this property now. We took it over from our family. We've inherited an issue that's been ongoing. Obviously, we kind of all know where the culprit is. I understand there's other complaints in the Route 1 corridor, but I am here to report to you tonight. I am here as someone who is completely and totally fed up and out of options. I've spoken to higher levels. I've spoken to the town people. I've spoken to the people that waste water. No one has answers. Everyone has these, "Let's try it, let's see." I'm reporting there has been no progress. I'd even offered that there's been a regression. I just had someone at my swimming pool almost get violently sick from the waft of wind that blew off that pump station this evening, right before I came here tonight. That is why I am here tonight. I appreciate you all listening to me. I don't want to fight. I don't want to do, I just want to run my business. That's all we want. We're not against anyone else running their business either. We just want to be able to do ours, too. Thank you.
Up next is Sheldon Nightingale.
Sheldon Nightingale, Ward 7. I do want to speak briefly on the 12 School Street recreational facility. First off, the first thing I noticed is in 2019, we bought this property for $240,000, if I can believe what's written, and now we're selling it for $200,000. That seems a little weird to me. I mean, real estate prices have gone up 35%, 40% in the three, three and a half years since we purchased that property. Doesn't seem as though we're doing a very good job managing real estate if we're going to take a $40,000 loss in three and a half years with this boom market we've had. But with that, I went in, I read this article that was written by the REC Department in 2019, and it is all positive about this property and, you know, everything that can be done with it. You know, it just had so much to offer. You know, it could be multi-generational programming. Our current vision for this space allows for daytime seniority social gatherings and new teen progress in the afternoons and evenings. It's ADA compliant. Elevator makes visiting accessible to all. The location downtown, easy walking distance. There's a complete kitchen. I mean, it goes on and on in this report how great this property is, and here we've been sitting on it for all this time and done nothing. Originally, they had an estimate of about $300,000 to renovate this property. I doubt that that was probably done professionally. It was probably, you know, somebody, you know, doing a ballpark estimate, which that would be my assumption, and now they come up with a figure of $900,000. It looks like, it sounds like it was done professionally, but we have to consider also that construction costs have probably gone up 40% to 50% in this period of time. And the report that's in your packet from the different departments about this property now, this one from 2019, is all positive. It's a great piece of property. We can do so much with it. And then the reports that I see in the packet that you'll be voting on tonight, it's all negative. I mean, I don't, what has changed in this three and a half years, other than the cost, which we know all costs have gone up considerably? I mean, I haven't been in the building. I don't know, you know, that much about it. But another thing that was eliminated in all the reports, you know, recent times, is the fact that with the original proposal included a senior, you know, being a senior facility as well as a teen center. The current reports don't talk anything about a senior center. You know, maybe we should sell it. I'm not sure. But there is a lot of money that's available. I'm sure the city has people who are very well-qualified and capable of writing and applying for grants. It just seems a shame to lose this facility, being, you know, its central location where, you know, a lot of people could walk to it, seniors and teens. I would just like to make sure you guys are, you know, really taking everything into consideration, you know, before you just sell this property. And the fact that you're proposing to take a $40,000 loss, that's just kind of mind-boggling to me with this. I just can't imagine what happened to this property in this time for degrees in value like that. But anyway, I just, I hope you take everything into consideration, and don't forget the seniors. You know, it's really something that they could be used, so, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is David Plaven.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm David Plaven. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. I'm also the Vice President of Seva Shore Saco Bay. I'm here to talk about progress that's been made with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and while there's some optimism, the reality of this situation still does not give us any reason to feel confident we're close to a final solution. Let's look at the good, the bad, the ugly. The good is that we have a new project manager, unlike our predecessor, is interested in getting something done. We're also getting dates for actual milestones, but that does not mean we will no longer be unindated with familiar core jargon, words like "soon," "we're working on it," "it's coming," et cetera. We actually saw the word expedient in a recent Corps missive. The bad also includes the word, the use of that word, because the Corps is now working on a 16-year timetable since the original appropriation was made. The city sent a letter of support for a PPA in September of 2022, and it will likely be a full year until we receive that document. The Corps did use the term "executed" when referring to the end of the fiscal year date for the PPA, which means that it should be signed by both sides on that date, which is September 30th of this year. We ask that the city have an attorney at the ready to review, to review the PPA and make sure that we can get that back to them as soon as possible and really make them understand what expedient means. We're currently locked into another delay as the Corps figures out sand replenishment schedules. We sent, SOS Saco Bay recently sent letters to our federal delegation at the beginning of the month asking to have the Corps answer to them for its lack of performance. Senator Collins pushed for the latest Corps response, which was a step in the right direction. She also moved $2 million forward to pay for the Corps design phase, and Senator King's office is also watching this closely. Further evidence of the Corps' failing grade is that the Northeast Office has made no attempt to adapt modern, more efficient technologies like living shorelines and wave attenuation devices. Once the PPA is signed, we really need to try for the most competent solution without allowing any further delays. And lastly, the ugly is that the Corps intends to take another three years before it sticks a shovel in the ground. Camp Ellis Beach is literally 10 feet of sand at high tide. We face mounting peril, and repair costs for the city and its, and local residents will grow. So we need to call the Corps out for its tactical missteps. Start with this reminder: processes for the people who don't know how to do their jobs. Sadly, we are living that case study. I thank you. And in the last 10 seconds, I also want to thank the city, especially Economic Development Director Tracy DeStardan for making SOS a major sponsor at the upcoming Harbor Fest. The support we get from all of you is greatly appreciated, the mayor and the entire council. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all for folks that have signed up. If there's anybody who would like to address the city council that hasn't signed up, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Rich Huer. I live at 22 Ocean Greens Drive in Saco, and like Kathy, I live in Strawberry Fields. And I wanted to talk about LD 2003. First of all, I'm new to the town council meetings. I came to the meeting two weeks ago, and I have a lot of respect for the process that you all follow and your commitment to the betterment of the city. So I don't know much about it, but I was impressed, and I do appreciate what you're doing, and you allow people like me to speak. And I realize that LD 2003 was passed by the state and that we don't have any choice but to implement procedures or ordinances or whatever to implement it. As a side note, though, as a property owner, I'm not a big- As a side note, though, as a property owner, I'm not a big fan of somebody like the state changing the zoning relating to my property without most people knowing it even happened. Now, I'm sure some people were aware, but I wasn't aware, and the people I've talked to weren't aware. So I don't think that's so terrific. I freely admit I don't know that much about LD 2003, but I'm learning as fast as I can. Mike Berman's been a big help, and others, including Kathy. But from what I can tell, the major item is implementing LD 2003, but within that or a subset is determining what's a growth area. And I was at the meeting two weeks ago where it was brought up that reinforced or reiterated that Ward 4 should be or be considered a growth area, and pushed back to the planning board to have that conversation and hopefully a workshop, and hopefully a neighborhood meeting like Kathy mentioned. So I wanted to talk about that. I've lived here about five years, so I'm not a long-timer like a lot of you, but I'm assuming that when Ward 4 was made in LDR, or Low Density, there was a reason for it, and there was a process. And some of those reasons were mentioned last meeting. The one road in and out, the conservation area, and what else was there? The river, and the fact that there's no commercial property in Ward 4 and others. I'm sure there was a whole host of reasons why it was made in LDR at the time. So I wonder, you know, rhetorically, why or what changed that Ward 4 now should be considered a growth area, when there's other growth areas in the town that were planned that way or built that way, or at least presumably they were. I don't know that for sure. We already know that the implementation of LD 2003 could increase the population in Ward 4 by three times, right? If everybody did two units, which I know everybody won't, and maybe even not that many will, but there will be growth there. And so if we have growth already, why do we want to add more growth in an area that's not well-suited for it? We have services and utilities and other things that were geared around single-family homes in that ward. So I guess my question is, or perhaps my challenge respectfully, is let's take advantage of the areas that are already growth areas and maximize those first, and then if we need to come back to Ward 4, let's go there. Like Kathy, I'm concerned, and I think others in the neighborhood are concerned, that increasing the population greatly in that ward will be a problem for the people that live there, for the town, and for the utilities. And so it seems a bit of a risk when we already have a mechanism to increase the population in Ward 4 and the town of Saco in the non-growth area and in the growth areas. So I'm just, would respectfully ask that you consider that carefully, and as you can tell, I'm not for it. I do not want Ward 4 to be a growth area. But again, I want to be respectful. I know you all have the betterment of Saco in mind, and you put a lot of time into this, so I want to do it respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public wishing to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, moving on from public comment to Item 7 of the agenda, and that is approval of the minutes for July 10, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I had some communication today with Michelle Hughes. There is a mistake in the minutes. It's on page four of the minutes. She misinterpreted, it's towards the end of the paragraph dealing with LD 2003, where she used the term inconsistent, and what I really said, and she's verified that by checking the record, it should be changed to "and consistent."
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Do you want to make that as a motion to change the minutes to reflect that?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote on the amendment to change the word inconsistent to "and consistent." Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion, the amendment passes 7-0. Back to the main motion to approve the minutes for July 10, now as amended. It was by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 8 of the agenda. There are no consent items this evening, so it brings us right to Item 9, action items. Up first is Item A, a final reading, Chapter 180, Solar Energy Systems/Commercial, assigned to Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a result of the Commercial Solar Energy System Moratorium, planning staff has drafted the attached ordinance regarding commercial solar energy systems, which intend to cover critical life, safety, and environmental considerations. Planning staff has collected feedback about this draft ordinance and recommends amendments as shown in the attached draft. I move to approve the final reading of the proposed Chapter 180 Solar Energy Systems Commercial Ordinance as amended.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman on the final reading of Chapter 180 Solar Energy Systems Commercial. Any discussion? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to acknowledge Director Cole Prescott for her really hard work in this. I think we ended up engaging in a really useful public-private dialogue that served to really create a better product when it meets the needs of our citizens, advances the cause of green energy in Saco, while also serving to facilitate the development with industry. I think this serves as a really great model for similar things going forward, and thank you for your work on that.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Likewise, I'm happy to hear about the collaboration between city staff and public or private sector. I do have a question, or two. First being, with this having originated at the staff level based on, I guess, their own concerns, do we feel that this, these changes or proposed changes, which largely from what I can see are, have been proposed by one developer, do they address the concerns that staff had? Or is there a feeling that there's potential loss in substance to the ordinance? Because by my read, there seems to be some rather substantial changes. And again, if, at council level, if we're going to approve this, we should be approving an ordinance not based on one developer's wants, but the overall needs of the community. So there's that question. And then additionally, under Article 6, Section 6.01, general site access, the, as proposed, it strikes the immediate loss of certificate of occupancy and business license and replaces with existing code on enforcement. So my question is, that removal, is there still potential under Chapter 1, Section 18, for an occupancy permit to be removed by the code office? I just, we've had this challenge in the past with similar ordinances where enforcement has been a challenge, and while I agree with the suggested changes by the developer, that it might be excessive, I would want to ensure that we still have that in-house to, you know, address the potential where it would be appropriate. I don't know if Director Prescott wants me to continue or address some as we go. I'll just continue going. And then Article 10, Environmental Health Requirements, Section 10.01, noise, strikes the 500 setback requirements near residences or potential residential areas. Again, with this originating at staff level and not council level, I assume there was a valid reason, or at least a belief, as to why that should be there. And just for perspective for council, again, I know very little about these solar farms. I assume they probably make very little noise, but again, we're putting an ordinance on the books. It's going to be in perpetuity, and I have no way of understanding what the potential is in the future when it comes to, you know, the technology of solar or commercial solar. So I think, given that I view this, and perhaps it's, you know, I'm wrong to view it this way, but I view this as industrial in nature, and so I would think, or I do believe, that a 500-foot setback is a reasonable setback, particularly when you look at the current zoning ordinance. It's only allowed currently, this use is only currently allowed in the rural conservation area, but that can change over time, and we may have a situation where, you know, again, a future council changes the ordinance, or an area is built out, and now you have higher density, dense residential areas. So, and again, additionally, the noise ordinance that has been cited, that is also subject to change at any time. So relying strictly on that, I guess I could see being potentially problematic for those concerned that live near this. Also, again, this addresses just noise, there is a component that I don't think we considered, which is potential glare, and that was an issue previously with pole-mounted solar in Saco. And again, I don't know, I haven't, I don't have any experience with these, but I could see where there is a potential to look out 50 acres and see massive glare through your windows. And again, I think that's a potential nuisance, why a 500-foot setback made sense. So again, on 50 to 100-acre lot, is a 500-foot setback really all that big of a deal? I mean, that's a council, a question for council, not directed at staff, but, I mean, that's for us to debate. And then previously, I had asked about management of the site, and if the city could require that, you know, hazardous chemicals such as Roundup or what have you be discouraged from being utilized on the site, and I don't know if that's, you know, something better for the maintenance agreement or performance standards, but it's still an outstanding question of mine. So I'll let staff address those.
This time, I'd like to bring up city planner Emily Cole Prescott.
So I think those are great questions. Obviously, when we make a draft and ordinance, we want to do the best ordinance possible for Saco, so I know you heard from some developers this evening, but I also had this ordinance reviewed on behalf of the city. The city of Saco paid for that review through the planning department, through my contracted services line item. The reviewer was Ty &amp; Bond. Ty &amp; Bond is our engineering service, one of our engineering services provider. They're very used to developing commercial solar energy systems. I was told that even as the solar energy system stands in the draft version before you tonight, that it's still one of the more strict ordinances that this person has come across. So she wanted us to be aware of that, so we just knew going forward. It was her recommendation, as far as the 500-foot setback, that we go do an acoustic study so that we have the ability to understand any noise impacts. The 500 feet she actually recommended probably to strike because this use, again, we're making this for the whole city, and this use is also a conditional use in the Portland Road District, so behind structures that exist on Portland Road, the solar, you can put solar out there. So we had concerns about citing locations, and we didn't want to discourage solar where it made sense in certain areas. So and I think an acoustic study gives us that understanding of what the potential impact could be and make sure that it's buffered. As far as the Section 1-18 reference, that came out of discussion with counselors. I believe Counselor Hatch recommended what we can do to strengthen compliance, so that's our general provisions for code enforcement. I do believe it would still give this council the ability to enforce, as it should, through the normal code enforcement process, and what that does is it references, by referencing that standard, then it makes sure that we stay consistent across the city as ordinances changes with our code enforcement provisions. So I try to reference standards that exist today so that everything changes concurrently. As far as other things that you've seen in here, things that maybe sound like rolled back a little bit, I was concerned about getting input again from one developer. I don't think that's right or fair, so that's why I went out to have this peer reviewed. And I think where we landed is very good, very reasonable for the city, like I said, more strict than other communities. As far as maintenance agreement, certainly we can include the concern about Roundup, and we can also update performance standards, which I'm planning on doing eventually with the planning board, too. So for this ordinance, I was mostly focused on those life safety provisions that our Chapter 230 ordinance did not address. I think the last thing was glare. Our Chapter 230 ordinance does require a visual impact study or survey, along with any planning board review. Most of these commercial solar energy systems, I think actually all of them, would require at least a conditional use review with the planning board. Yes, they are both conditional in the RC and the PR zones. So as part of the Chapter 230 standards for performance criteria, we would look at glare and any visual impact. I also think that this does update our standards on decommissioning and future conditions conceptual plans, so there were some things that we worked through that I think are really important for permitting in the future.
Thank you for the responses. I appreciate them, and again, I think they're adequate for what's before us. You know, we're in uncharted waters here with this use, so I wanted to make sure, you know, I kind of go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions on this item? Counselor Johnston?
I do have just one other comment, and again, it's not directed at staff. It's more a personal comment. You know, I noticed that this has been made retroactive, which I find kind of interesting considering, you know, this same council, many of us, all of us have seated, have been seated here, and I've watched on several occasions when proposed ordinances or ordinances that ultimately moved through, you know, were discouraged by the retroactivity of it. Myself personally, I view the use of retroactivity, it really should be in an emergency situation. I don't view, well, I understand that, you know, this particular developer has put time and energy towards development. I don't really understand why it warrants retroactivity versus just waiting the 30 days for it to become law. So it's, again, my opinion.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I agree with you, Counselor Johnston, that clause was recommended by city attorney Tim Murphy to go retroactive to the date the emergency moratorium was started. Our moratorium is actually set to expire, I believe, August 5th, so you have a handful of days between August 5th, and if you approve this tonight, August 24th. So he wanted to make sure that we were well-covered from the date of when the moratorium started. So that language was actually drafted by our city attorney, recommended directly by him.
Okay, I understand what the concern could be, but couldn't this council just enact the ordinance as of tonight? I think that there's a provision in the charter or code that allows that. Why go all the way back? And again, I understand there's a gap there that the attorney may be concerned that someone comes forward with a proposal and then wouldn't be covered under the ordinance, but I also find that highly unlikely, given the time and energy that goes into getting approvals. But again, it's just, I'm looking for a matter of, you know, fairness to all, and when we start applying retroactivity to, again, an ordinance that I don't view as an emergency, it becomes problematic in my mind.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Berman?
I appreciate Counselor Johnston's comments on the retroactivity, and agree with his conclusion that it should be saved for only the most urgent of situations. I also recognize Director Cole Prescott's pointing out that the gap between the effective date of this, if we pass it in our, in our normal course of business, and the current moratorium would have a several-week period in which-
Any further discussion? Councilor Berman?
I appreciate Councilor Johnston's comments on the retroactivity, and agree with his conclusion that it should be saved for only the most urgent of situations. I also recognize Director Cole Prescott's pointing out that the gap between the effective date of this, if we pass it in our, in our normal course of business, and the current moratorium would have a several-week period in which these would not be enforced. Can we get an answer as to whether there is a provision that we could have an effective date tonight? I think that would be a more elegant solution.
There's no attorney here this evening, that's why the attorney has been, you know, already reviewed this and gave a recommendation, that's why you pay a city solicitor to give a recommendation, and this is his recommendation, which City Planner Prescott informed you all. I'd have to look at the charter, and we'd have to get a legal opinion, so if you're looking to go down that route, you should table this item until we can get a legal opinion on that matter. However, I think you're going to find that the legal opinion is going to be similar to the one that's already been put forward. But if we want to go down that avenue, if somebody wants to make a motion to table and it passes, we can go down that road.
If it's helpful, I have not, I'm not aware of any applications that are pending or any projects that this would affect as of April 24th, 2023.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston, do you want to make a motion to table and see if it goes, or do you want to, are you satisfied with this?
I mean, like, I'm not necessarily looking to clog up agendas, but I am, I think you all know, one that's very based on principles. And so for me, without knowing, again, that the change was made in the ordinance, there was no indication from the city attorney, I never had that legal opinion, so I entered tonight with not having that knowledge. So while his opinion may be, you know, paid for, as you indicated, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't necessarily mean it's ultimately right, because council, it's council's purview, how we enact ordinances. So, I mean, yeah, I guess for entertainment purposes, I'll move the table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. No discussion, roll call, vote on tabling. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
No.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
No.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
No.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion fails. Back to the main motion. Councilor Johnston?
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, I'll vote in support of this, but again, I want to highlight, as I just did, that council never received that opinion. So this change, that is apparently a legal opinion, is kind of forcing council's hands against what it would appear that, at the very least, there's four of us here that seem to have reservations about retroactivity. And I would prefer, for future references, that if that's going to be the case, then council should be informed ahead of time. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? Is it appropriate that the board, the council could remove the retroactivity clause? We would just have a gap. If council's more comfortable with that, we would have a little bit of a time gap, and we can probably work with that, because it is a life safety ordinance.
I think that was the reason why we took the motion to table, to go back and review any kind of legal opinion from Tim, but given that this is his language, as you indicated, I can't imagine it's going to change that much. But the motion to table did fail, and so now we are at the main motion, not amended. Any further discussion? Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, but based on where we're at right now, I'll vote to approve it. But it was just a comment that was made, is that the city attorney's opinion is made in the context of the time, so when council has additional questions, that opinion could be changed. So, again, that's where, now, where my reservations were to table, that's not what I'm talking about right now. But, again, I'm going to vote for it, but opinions change based on input. So without the newest input that was just asked, we have to make a decision based on what we have. So, opinions change is where I'm going, especially legal opinions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Purdy, then Councilor Gunn. Councilor Purdy?
Thank you. Yeah, I've expressed my reservations about retroactivity before. Just given where we are tonight, I'm satisfied with the ordinances written, and I'll vote for it, simply because I'd, well, there are two evils, I guess, I'd rather not leave a gap. I'll vote for the retroactivity, rather than leave a time gap in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Councilor Purdy's point, though, and to Emily Cole Prescott's point, though, as a life safety issue, that's my deciding factor in this. As it relates to City Solicitor Murphy's opinion, I think this is a good demonstration that we, when we have situations such as this, where the issue of retroactivity come up, especially when we're creating a new ordinance such as this, especially when it's considered "emergency," quote-unquote, obviously, I know there's some difference of opinion in what constitutes an emergency. I think it would be prudent, and yes, I do know it costs money, to have City Solicitor Murphy here to answer those questions, to inform opinions, as it would be prudent. That way, it prevents, shall we say, unnecessary tabling, though, if we can have all the information presented in one meeting, and allows a nice flow of business. But in that spirit, I will also add my compliments to Emily Cole Prescott's work on this issue, and I'm going to defer to her judgment on this one, since we're creating this from scratch. Beautiful thing about being in the council is we can go back and tweak it later if we see any reason to, but at this point, I don't see any reason why we have to hold it up any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. One last comment. Again, I'm not questioning whether or not we can do retroactivity. I think we have found in the past, we can. The question here is, you know, was the legal opinion, did that remove council's oversight or purview on the matter? It just got added into the ordinance with no clear explanation as to why, and that's what I'm questioning. So, I will, again, vote in support, but not happily. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to Item B.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Item B, public hearing and final reading on Chapter 81, 12 School Street, page 9 in your packet, assigned to Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 12 School Street property was built as a church and for many years was Saco's United Methodist Church. In 2001, the property was sold to a private party, and since that time, the parcel had been used for housing and a customary home occupation. In August of 2019, the city of Saco bought the property in hopes of rehabilitating it as a park and recreation teen center. At the time, the level of work needed to convert to a teen center was evaluated and considered manageable. However, with additional work needed to convert the space and the increased cost of construction, the city initiated its Chapter 81 process. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote to open the public hearing. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Council McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:19. The public hearing is now open on this item. Any member of the public wishing to speak, got to the council, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, Jean Saunders, 3 Plymouth Drive. I'm here tonight to ask the city council to reconsider the recommendation to sell 12 School Street. When this building was purchased in August of 2019, it was expressly purchased for creating a teen center and a new senior center space. The Saco Parks and Rec newsletter from August 2019 states, "We are at capacity in our building for what we can offer programmatically. The next phase to continue growth for Saco Parks and Rec is to look at additional space." When we first considered expanding locations, and this is Parks and Rec speaking, we're looking for a facility that would allow two things. The first, the same ability as a current community center to adapt and convert to a variety of uses, and the second is a location that would allow us to feature multi-generational services and expand programs for two primary user groups, teens and older adults. Clearly, at some point along the way from 2019, the use of the space was dropped for older adults, and the narrative changed for it only to be used as a teen center. I cannot discern from the Parks and Rec newsletters and from notes if this was the decisions voted upon by Parks and Rec Advisory Board, if it was a mere oversight. I'm here tonight to ask you for reconsideration in keeping this project and turning it into the multi-generational community space Saco is so in need of. Teens deserve their own space, and so do our older residents. It appears during this time that there was one attempt to receive funding to help with the renovations of the new space through a Saco Main Street contest, in which residents voted for which project they wanted. The contest stated, "The city of Saco purchased a former Methodist church that was built in the mid-1800s with the intent in converting this grand old building into a multi-generational center, serving our teens and seniors, with support from Saco Main Street and Age Friendly Saco." Age Friendly Saco was never invited to be part of this process of helping to find this new space for seniors, or ever asked to participate in pursuing any additional grant funds. I'm not aware of any other funding sources that were ever sought to support this project. Did we consider a community development block grant? It's perfect funding for this type of project. I understand that the construction costs in 2023 are much more than what was anticipated in 2019, but they are not insurmountable. It's not a reason to abandon space that is an ideal location in our downtown area, close to City Hall and our schools, one that is walkable and will make our community more livable for all. Again, in reference to the newsletter, we are at capacity, they can't offer anything more, so why, if they're at capacity, are we passing up and walking away from this opportunity? I point to our neighbor across the river, and the new teen center that's being developed at the old Saint Andres Church by the not-for-profit My Place Teen Center. They have a fundraising goal of $6 million. They have engaged community partners and city leaders in the process. They applied for and received a $1.5 million grant from York County Government and ARPA Funds. Did we apply for any funds from York County in order to assist in looking at the renovation of this space? And I quote again from the newsletter, "This is what this space would provide. The first floor is, offers a layout that is ideal for multi-generational programming. Our current vision is for the space allows for daytime seniority, social gatherings, and new teen programs. The second floor was originally built to hold church services. The space features a dedicated stage area, beautiful acoustics, and a large open space, which used a seating. It has an ADA compliant elevator, making the building accessible for all. This location has close proximity to downtown Saco, allowing us to connect more easily with all residents. They have a complete kitchen, one that has, provides potential for cooking classes and meal service at special events. As many of you are aware, the acoustics in our current community center gymnasium are less than ideal, and we struggle with withholding dinner dances, meals in this space. It is the only large meeting space in the community center, and it is a gymnasium." I will ask again, if we don't have another option for an expanded community center, why are we walking away from this property? Have we exhausted all of the sources of grant funding at all levels, local, state, and federal? This is a wonderful opportunity for Saco. I ask you to reconsider this proposal, to dispose of this property, and allow interested community members, partners, groups, to bring a renewed vision and energy to this highly needed community space. Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. Glenn Sharet, Ferry Road. I'm in support of keeping the building on 12 School Street, but before I discuss that, I want to tie something to it that Age Friendly Saco is doing. We have started our meal program very successfully. We have served 88 people with the last dinner that we, or luncheon that we put on. And we do that at the Saco Elks. The Saco Elks Club has got a fantastic eating arena, although their kitchen is small. The community facility, the kitchen is large, but the eating facility leaves a lot to be desired. So now, that brings me to 12 School Street. I tried to get in there today, and it was unsuccessful in finding a key. I'd really like to tour that section, but I believe that building is ideal for a lot of functions other than Age Friendly Saco's meal program. It's in the center of town, it's walking distance for a lot of our seniors. There's just a lot of benefits, and it's a charming old building. Structurally, it looks sound, and I think Saco should keep it. I'm going to offer my talent and expertise to help the city in any capacity that I can to proceed with renovations, grant, money finding, whatever the city thinks I can do, I will help. But please reconsider selling this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at Hillview Avenue. If any of you have been by, don't try and go down our road at this time. It will be unsuccessful. We have been volunteers with Age Friendly Saco since 2016, about two years after we moved here. In 2018, I think it was, Saco became an age-friendly city. That's kind of interesting. I'm not sure how Saco qualified, but Saco has supported us for a long time, especially with the ideas in the beginning. In 2019, we had this great article about what was happening with the Methodist Church, and we know that the community center is packed all the time. We know that they have filled it to capacity. We are grateful to have a office there, which is also packed to capacity. I'm sure all of you are aware of Amelia Foster's seniority program. It's a fantastic program, and I'm surprised that somehow that's off the radar for the church, but she could certainly expand that program if she had more space. So, I'm also puzzled by how this seems to be suddenly happening, and we didn't hear anything about it until just about now. How come there's never been any public discussion prior to this? We're grateful for the operational support. We're very, very grateful for the money that's helped us to expand the transportation program to all three cities. We are grateful for the grant that's enabled the luncheon program that Glenn was talking But we are packed. We are at our capacity, and we would like to see this building kept and be able to expand our programs further. I think that all of you are aware of Jean Saunders' exceptional ability to get grants, and we are not sitting, she's not sitting on her fingers, you know, saying, "Give us money, give us money, give us money." Everyone's aware of all the awards she's won. Saco is on the map because of Age Friendly. So we would like to see you reconsider this motion. Thank you.
If there's any other member of the public who would like to address the city council on this issue, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Councilor McPhail.
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing, and to further move to grant permission- I move to close the public hearing and to further move to grant permission to the Economic Development Director, Tracy Disjardins, to sell 12 School Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, one, I was thinking about abstaining, because if we do sell it, I'd be interested in buying it. But I'm not, more of a joke, but I was considering it. $200,000 is a steal, is what it appears to be. So I'll be voting no on this, because I started thinking about, what is that cost of just sitting there for us right now? Basic electricity, not really water. We don't pay taxes on it. We don't have a mortgage on it. So what is the true cost? Insurance? And how much is that? And for us to take a $40,000 hit, how long would it take to recuperate that cost if we just sat on it to think? I believe when this first came to us, when it was no longer of the interest of Parks and Rec, we had discussed, like, thinking of other options. And some of our participants have presented other options, but I just think it's, if you look next door, the old police department, we've had conversations, some councillors and I have been like, we could have used that. We sold it. We didn't really need to. We didn't get a lot of money for it. And I feel like we're just kind of doing the same thing again with this property for something that truly doesn't cost a city significant amount, especially when we're putting a $40,000, not a premium, discount on the property. So I'm not interested in selling. I'm still open to seeing how we could use it. Could we bring in staff offices? Could we, there's something here. I don't know what it is at the moment, but we also haven't had conversations on it. So I do believe this community could collaboratively come up with a plan, resources, things of that nature, on how to make this work in the interest of the city. I think there's something there. I don't know what it is, but I think it's premature to put a $40,000 discount on a property that we could possibly do something with still, again, at very minimal annual cost.
Thank you. Councilor Berman, then Councilor Johnston. Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've heard a lot about this building in the last few minutes. Let me say a few things. I was very excited about the possibilities for this building. As the parent of teens, I know the community needs a teen center. I believe that multi-general space is highly useful for community building and important for people's mental health. The benefits are proven in the scientific literature. I also believe the location is great, with the exception of parking. It's downtown location, the layout of the space over the two floors, as we heard described. It has everything you would want in a community center. However, I have toured the space, and I want to say the amount of renovations needed are simply immense. And in the last three years, as I understand it, there has been significant change, both in the code and what would be required for life and fire safety in the building, as well as the status of the building. Pipes have frozen and flooded and degraded. There's been electrical issues that have resulted in shutting off of power. And without power and water to certain parts of the building, the infrastructure will not remain stable. It will continue to weather through broken windows and lack of heat. So I'm concerned that unless the city chooses to invest simply to preserve the building, there will be further degradation. And my assessment in the tour is that without significant financial support and really enthusiastic and creative project management, the space simply can't be usable for what it was intended for. And at least so far, as city council, we have seen few options that would meet those two criteria, right? The significant financial support and the enthusiastic and creative project management. So while when we first started discussing this Chapter 81 for this property, I expressed my dismay in that at one point, we had a dream that I thought would be very important for the town. My current status is on pessimistic, we can accomplish what we set out to do, as is.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I guess my comments, you know, they're not critical of any one individual. It's really an issue of process for me from a council perspective. When we last spoke of this building, when it was still a teen center, senior center concept around the budget time, at that time, the motion was to sell the property. I raised issue with it. I made the motion to drop that, and I had suggested that we have a workshop so that we could have a more inclusive process. You know, as several members of our community have stated, there may be other nonprofit needs that we haven't considered. I mean, Seeds of Hope over in Biddeford might need the space. We have asylum seeker issues. And again, I'm not saying any one of these suggestions are the answer, but we never actually delved into that discussion. You know, briefly after that, or several weeks back, losing track of time, this council in an executive session had a singular potential proposal for affordable housing. Following that, in breakneck speed, we moved forward with this Chapter 81. You heard me several weeks back question whether or not there are other spatial needs within the city government. As I've stated previously, I've heard through three city administrators reference spatial needs. I'm not an expert. I can't tell you where half the offices are anymore in the city hall, because they've moved so much because of spatial needs. So several weeks ago, I had asked for, again, an analysis be performed. And I recognize we are in a situation where we did not have, you know, an active outside of our interim city manager, city administrator. Perhaps that was, you know, a conflict. What it was provided with was a memo from senior staff, which, again, I can accept that memo. I think they're, you know, very talented and qualified. However, we're embarking on the hiring of a new city administrator. As I've seen, again, on two separate occasions previously, each city administrator views the structure of this organization differently and makes those changes. So, you know, me personally, I prefer we wait on this item, at least until we have a city manager that can review not just current needs, but future needs. I mean, as you've heard me state before, I've watched at least the addition of, oh, about 30 staff members to city government since I was first elected. I hear consistently that we might need more code officers, more planning staff, you know, you name it. Where do you put those people? And, you know, as Councilor Archer mentioned, you've heard me state about prior councils selling the building beside us. That was in close proximity to City Hall, made sense, at least in my opinion at the time, for the city to retain it and look how to adequately, you know, use it, whether, again, be nonprofit or for city government uses, before we just outright sell it. And another example of the city underselling itself with that location. Without that comprehensive review from city council, I'm challenged to move forward with selling this property, mainly because I can sit here and give you at least several examples of prior property that was owned by the city of Saco that council, again, we had a goal and objective, and it didn't turn out the way we had hoped, right? So I think that before you do anything, we should certainly hone in, if it is ultimately affordable housing, we should probably hone in on the terms of that, because as it stands, this motion, which, again, going to the motion I have issues with, where we are just simply directing a city staff member to sell the property. I don't think that's actually consistent with Chapter 81, where it is council that sets the method of sale, and we've failed to do that with this motion. Now, again, the motion could be amended, but I think there's more discussion to be had on this, and I will be voting either table or just outright turn this down at this time.
Councilor Johnston, you want that to be your official motion to table?
No. I mean, I'd like to hear what the rest of council says, because once I make the motion, there's no discussion.
Councilor McPhail, then Councilor Hatch, then Councilor Purdy, then Councilor Gunn.
Thank you. With regard to the building itself, you know, when we brought this to the Park and Rec Advisory Board, and it was discussed, and it was voted on with a recommendation to sell, it was a really hard decision for a lot of us. We all were looking forward to the potential and the prospect of having this multi-generational teen center aging programs. But I got to tour the building, as did Councilor Berman, and looking, it just is not suited at this time. I mean, there's so much work. The longer the building sits, the more damage will be done to it. The cost is just going to continue to go up. And when it was brought to us by facilities, Don Roth, it was over a million. I believe it was 1.2 at that time. And that did not include everything that needed to be done. That was the basics. So we were looking at almost a $500,000, $600,000 increase from what we had originally anticipated in 2019. And just the reality of the time and COVID and everything that had happened, the decision to move forward and possibly sell it had to be made, because, again, it's going to be, even if we were to do it, it would be a process that's going to take three, four to five years. The dream of a teen center and multi-generational facility is not dead. That is still something that is a priority for Director Summer, for Park and Rec, and for the city. So it is not something that is just going to die with the sale of a building. It will be continued to look at, and we will find the right place, and it will happen. So again, the four or five years it could take to renovate, we will have a program in place. As far as the tightness now, we, some of that will be alleviated with the use of the new building at Young School. But again, Director Summer and the group, they are actively looking and they're actively working out possibilities going forward. So again, it is not a dead dream. It is something that everybody is still very, very prioritized on. But the building itself, again, with Councilor Berman, I just do not think structurally, over time, it is something that could feasibly be done.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm just really torn on this whole issue, and I'm kind of leaning towards the, a little bit more exploration here. I think that, with all due respect to staff, which I have a lot of respect for, it doesn't seem to me that we had a fair amount of citizen involvement in determining the utility of that building. And I think that allowing that to happen, particularly when you have an energetic group like Age Friendly Saco, could at least have a chance to look at the building and maybe come up with a plan, an idea, with potential funding sources. I would be inclined to wait for that to happen. I also respect the fact that we have a new city administrator coming in. I think that we should probably allow that person to have some view on what we're going to do with this property, because once it's gone, it's gone. And getting it back is going to be problematic. I understand, you know, I'm sitting, been on the face of the earth for a long time. I'm sitting in the hottest real estate market I have ever experienced. And to the public comment that occurred earlier, I'm struggling a little bit myself, and I understand that there's probably deterioration to the building, that we paid $240,000 for a building and we're willing to sell it for $200,000 in the hottest real estate market that I've experienced. So I'll be that as it may. My vote's going to be cast against selling the property.
Thank you. Councilor Purdy.
Thank you. This has been a difficult, ongoing issue for, well, the entire time I've been sitting Everything everybody has said is, it's all valid points. I mean, frankly, I'm less than thrilled with the idea of taking a $40,000 loss on a piece of property that the city bought. But at the same time, I don't know how long, how much longer we can wait before there's more damage to the building and we're going to lose more money. So I would be amenable to tabling this after everybody's had their chance to say what's on their mind. I'm not going to make a motion right now, only because if some interested parties want to bring forward some ideas, then I'm certainly willing to listen to them. I don't, I would rather table it than take a vote and have it not pass, because then technically, we can't bring up the issue again by rules and order of business until, well, it won't be able to be brought up in front of council until after the new council is seated. Tabling it would at least give us the option of bringing it back before too much time has passed. Yeah, just the thoughts that are running through my head. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gunn, and then Councilor Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilor McPhail's sentiments, though, in terms of the condition of the building and also the intent for us to have a teen and senior center at some point. Obviously, the issues that got us to this point, though, the unintended consequences of building supplies associated with COVID and the demand and the need for a teen center, when we had a situation where people weren't leaving their homes, sort of made the whole decision sort of a fait accompli. But at the same time, again, to Councilor McPhail's point, I'm, I gotta go back to, and Council Johnson's right, I'm actually kind of not sure when it was. I believe it was earlier this year, and we had this initial discussion about the latest, where we are today. We talked about, you know, future needs for Parks and Rec and other third-party entities about where they could go. And I think one point that everyone seems to be forgetting is that we're standing at attention, waiting for the school department, you know, dealing with Augusta, though, but pretty soon, we're going to have to take a vote, both as a council and as a voting public, about the future of a new elementary school. And when we do that, it's going to open up Burn School, it's going to open up, well, at least the, at least the property of Fairfield, though. I'm not sure it's in any condition to really house something, though. The building might have to be seriously renovated, if not outright rebuilt, if we were to keep a building on that structure. But of course, Burn School, century-old building, though, but undergone a lot of renovation, including when I was there back in '89. We have structures that are, you know, through the school, though, but at the end of the day, we pay the bills. We have structures that eventually, in the next foreseeable future, will become available for city use. And if anything, we can have a discussion about what entities need a particular space. Because the last thing I want is a mad scrum of folks saying, you know, I want this because we demand it more, and we demand it more, though, when everybody has got a lot of, you know, everyone's got valid reasons for wanting it, though. But we can have that discussion, not over a specific property, because in this case, I think there's some space to go around. I remember when the subject of Burn School becoming available came up. I know Director Summer was quite enthusiastic, because, I mean, you could seriously clear out a lot of that space, and you have a lot of space to have a lot of programs for seniors, kids, everyone in between, for that matter. Again, this is just spitballing on what we could do with the property, because obviously, we've also had discussions about affordable housing. Now, on the subject of affordable housing, we have to do nothing but just look over that way and see what's happened when an old church was converted into housing. Now, obviously, I'm not sure how affordable that is, being so close to Saco. I don't know if it's market rate. You'll have to forgive me on that one. But we did have, I know we had a constituent send us an email shortly before this meeting, and the gist of it was, if we're going to put this out to sell, the property, that we direct the Economic Development Director to make a priority of making it affordable. Director to make a priority of making it affordable, low-income, or veterans' housing. And I seem to recall about 45 minutes ago, we had a couple of folks from Ward Four come in here and basically challenge us to, you know, explain to them in minute detail what is the law of the land, which is LD 2003, with the impetus being, we don't want that type of development here. We want elsewhere in the city. Now, unfortunately, they didn't stick around, though. But I would say simply that the entire city is in that together. And in the interest of fairness, if we were to unload the property at a loss, but before it becomes even more of a loss, it does open up that property for potential development, especially if we empower the Economic Development Director to consider affordable housing as a use for that building. And I think that would be a prudent use, not only for the building, but at the same time, in the spirit of not one ward thinking if they're getting picked on in terms of the implementation of LD 2003. I think, I mean, if we're gonna, you know, we have to. There is no option on it. Though, if we're going to obey the spirit and the letter of the law, though, we have to spread that around, though. And at the same time, make use of what property we have, so it isn't just a bunch of accessory dwelling units making everybody angry. I mean, here we have a property that's pretty close to town, that would make a great housing development, such as this one was. And like I said, in the near future, Fairfield, Burns, also perfectly close to town, too, and might be more of a practical use for Parks and Rec and/or any organizations, such as Age Friendly, that could utilize it. So that's why I'm more open to actually unloading this property while we can, though, because with the implication of LD 2003, that is the priority, at least I, the way I view it. You know, we can make space for people right now, for the organizations, though, but people need a place to live. So that's how I rate my priorities in this situation. And in that spirit, I'm inclined to vote for it. But again, I haven't heard everybody else yet, so I don't telegraph my votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at the next 20, 50 years on this when I'm making my decision. But now I just want to talk about numbers. The, back in January of this year, we received a feasibility study for this building, conducted by Port City Architecture, and the numbers were not near a million. I can get you the numbers. In the feasible study, they're required to bring it to code. They said it costs $332,350, and they built in about $43,000 for contingency, so that could offset some of the costs that's happened in the market. They identified the sprinklers, fire systems, all this, and it was for a totality of 332, with some built-in cushion for contingency. There are other costs at 240,000 were recommended. To examine the elevator at 5,000 for roof repairs, again, recommended, not required yet, and that was only for 25,000. Removing the pigeons at 8 grand. Kitchen upgrades and appliances for $60,000. We could, like, not target that one. I'd just cut it by $60,000. The first thing we'd need to do is not the kitchen. They suggested restrooms at $400 a square feet, to cost $40,000. We could, because now it's allowed, we could make it a unigender-type restroom, cut some costs there. Finishes, painting flooring, 75,000. We have staff that could do that, the painting side. Some of the structural issues, of course, I'd go out, but there is room for debate. The other part of this, talking about numbers, so again, to get it to code is 332. We're willing to take a $40,000 hit, so let me just subtract that from the 332, because we're willing to take that as a loss. As of December of this year, our ARPA funding, and again, I don't know what's been spent since January, we still have $200,000 available for the teen center upgrade. So when you take the 40,000 that we're willing to take a hit on, you take the 200,000 that we already have, that's 240. To get to just 330, we're talking $90,000. If this goes through, I'm willing to put a budget amendment this year for $90,000 to get the project at least required to code. It's only $90,000. And when I'm thinking 20 to 50 years out, that's nothing. The recommendations, again, do we have to upgrade this kitchen yet? Can that be put on hold? Can that be put on for years from now? The restrooms, again, a lot of this cost comes out to about 5, just under 600,000, and we already have 200 available that we voted on. Brings it down to 400. We're willing to take a $40,000 hit, so I'm adding that as an opportunity cost, or some kind of building that into there. Just to get it to code, we're only looking at $130,000. That is nowhere near the bonding requirement suggested of a million. That is something that we can find out of some of our general funds. We are discussing later, taking money out of some TIFs. We could apply the TIFs to this project and have no actual impact on our actual budget, because 200,000 was set aside of last year that I don't know if we spent for the teen center upgrade. We have TIF that we're about to debate soon for a second and final reading on two of them. There's money there. We never got to the workshop on this. But the reports here, it was presented to us, or presented to the city, feasibility report of City of Saco, January 18th, 2023. The budget for ARPA, it's right there. When I just go with numbers, it doesn't make sense to, one, take a $40,000 hit, when we can have more debate, and, two, it suggests that maybe we should just pull the trigger and get it to code, find the 100,000 and change. So that's where I stand. And again, it's based on numbers. And I'm looking 20 to 50 years out, because if you try to get a teen center, or a senior center, or even city office space, again, it hasn't been designated yet. Downtown, how much is that going to cost us? We're going to tear down buildings, build a new one? I'm trying to solve an issue now, not try to create, solve a problem in the future. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Berman.
Thank you. Very quickly, I'm excited by what I see as renewed enthusiasm for the building. I would recommend that if we would like to keep this building and rededicate it to a teen or a multigenerational space, that we do not table this motion, but instead vote it down for two reasons. One, I think tabling leaves it in an uncertain situation. It does not send a clear message to city staff that we want to build it out, that we want to explore funding to bring it up to code. Instead, it just moves the issue down the road in a week-by-week, meeting-by-meeting process, leaving ambiguity as to our further direction. Second, in my, I think now, three or four years on council, I've heard several references to the fact that we cannot bring back a motion that's failed. I just, once again, looked at our rules and order of business, and I do not find it there. I find references that we follow a modified version of Robert's Rules of Orders, ads voted on below, and a bunch of text below that does not refer to the inability to bring failed motions back. Second, as I understand Robert's Rules of Order, you cannot bring the same or substantially similar motion back once it's failed. This motion directs Economic Development Director Tracy Dederin to sell 12 School Streets. Should a motion be substantially different, say directing it for a specific purpose, like affordable housing, that would not be the same motion. That would be a different motion that could then come up, even if we are following Robert's Rules of Orders. So I think tabling the motion leads to an ambiguous situation. If we want to direct city staff to create quotes and start to bring this building up to code, I suggest we vote no and direct the city to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, with respects to the condition of the building, as other councils collaborated to, that's a main reason for, you know, myself voting ultimately to remove the property from use by Parks and Recs, because the consideration was that it was not feasible for Parks and Recs use at the time. It was a teen center, multigenerational. It would not create or produce income, and therefore, it was felt by the director and the advisory committee at the time that it should be freed from, again, the original use. So, and I agree with Counselor Archer in his assessment of the overall costs. Many things can be phased in over time. That was where I was alluding to previously, with the notion of potentially only using it for storage, given that you probably don't have to. And again, I'm not an expert, but you're probably not required to get to the same level of codes that you would be if you were putting teens or seniors in the facility. And again, with respects to Counselor Gunn's comments, it certainly has, I haven't lost sight of the potential of CK Burns, but that's in the future, and we're here now. And I believe we have not just a fiscal responsibility, but just an overall responsibility to the community to ensure that we're finding the highest and best use for this property. And it's my belief, again, that's done through engagement with the community. As we've clearly heard tonight, there's certainly a certain segment that feels left out of the process. And I would just note that while there may be a cost to keeping the building as is, this is far from what the city did with 90 Temple Street, that had no roof, literally was open to the elements. By all accounts, the building was condemnable, but yet, we sat on it for many years until hopefully finding the right buyer. And that's not the situation over at 12 School Streets. So I don't think there's an emergency to sell. I don't, I don't, again, I'm not suggesting we sit on this for the next five years. But I do think that it would be, you know, right of us to consider, at the very least, you know, holding those workshops and waiting until we have a new city administrator for their analysis of the city situation prior to selling this. So I understand your comments, Counselor Berman, about tabling it. My only concern with voting it down would be that we would restart the Chapter 81 review. And I think, my personal opinion on it, what I've received to date via that process, clearly didn't satisfy what this council was looking for. So, you know, do we clog up future meetings with more Chapter 81 reviews, or do we accept what's been presented to date, table it with a date, if you would like, you know, six months from now, and then restart this process at that point? It's just throwing it out there as to why my concerns would be if we voted it down.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Counselor Johnston has made a motion to table. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion, or, excuse me, no discussion, motion to table, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
No.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
And Counselor Johnston.
Well, I made the motion, so yes.
The motion's a table fails. So back to the Chapter 81, 12 School Street, final motion to close the public hearing and set final reading. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the motion, such that it reads, "I move to close the public hearing, retain the building, and schedule a workshop for council to discuss this property at the soonest possible date."
Second. Counselor Berman has made an amendment, read it into the record, and basically, you're closing the public hearing and setting a, retaining the property and setting a future workshop for this item. Any discussion on the amendment only? Amendment only? No discussion on the amendment. Roll call vote on the amendment only. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes, 6-1. That brings us back to the main motion now, as amended, to close the public hearing, retain the property at 12 School Street, and set a final, or, excuse me, set a workshop to be held at a later date. Any discussion on the main motion now, as amended? Counselor Purdy?
I believe it wasn't at a later date. I believe it was worded as soon as possible or something to that effect.
That's correct. Fair enough. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnston.
Again, given that we're not necessarily privy to everything that may currently be going on behind the scenes with city staff, I would just ask if there's any reasons for council not to move forward with this path.
City Administrator Duras.
No, if this is the path that the council wants to move forward, we'll move it forward.
Fair enough. Any further discussion points on this item? You're now voting on the motion as amended. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-1. That brings us to Item C of the agenda on page 20 in your packet, a second and final reading, reducing captured value percentage of downtown municipal development and tax increment financing district, assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. The City of Saco would significantly increase the property tax rate if 100% of taxes paid on the captured assessed values in the downtown development TIF district were to be transferred into the district. This motion returns 43% of downtown development TIF district revenues for the fiscal year-end 2024 budget year. Be it ordered that council approve the second and final reading of the resolution titled "Reducing Captured Value Percentage of the Downtown Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District." I move to approve the resolution.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second? Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Archer. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I have a number of questions and some concerns that I think are best directed to staff. I'll just start talking about them. But my first question is, was this returned revenue already part of the budget and the calculated tax rates? Is this, was it already assumed that we would vote yes in the budget and tax rate we set? And if so, what are the consequences if council doesn't approve it tonight? And I guess, the converse, what would be the consequences to the general fund if we do approve it tonight?
So the approved budget included an assumption of return of funds. So should council elect to vote down the resolution, it's about $2 million total, and I do have the mill rate calculator up. The impact on the net tax levy, the net tax levy is approved by council on May 8th, was a 3.34% increase on the actual tax bill for a typical homeowner. Should council vote down this resolution, the tax bills will go up 7%.
So that was my belief. And I just have some concerns about the order in which this is done, right? It's sort of, in some hands, some case, some ways, I guess, this ties our hands, as we've already approved a budget and we've already set a tax rate. To not approve these now would cause significant concern among the taxpaying public. But it prohibited us from having a robust discussion on changing our TIF strategy at a time when we could have done so, I think, productively. So I really have some real significant concerns about that. I'm also a little bit concerned about the effects on our property valuation and the ED 279. I know that's a moving average over the last three years of evaluations, and so we won't see the full impact in one or two years. But have we done any modeling to what's going to happen to the school tax rates over the next three-to-five-year timeframe? I'm afraid it's going to look to the public like their school taxes are going way up, when in fact, the changes are occurring on the city and municipal side.
So in general, the way it works when we calculate the school versus city taxes is the municipal tax levy includes TIF transfers. So were we to roll these transfers into the net tax levy, the city portion of the mill rate would go up significantly. rate would go up significantly versus what was anticipated. However, the school would remain the same in this year, and then depending on how student counts and total valuation growth in the state occur versus what we're projecting with this adjustment to the TIF valuation capture, we might see our EPS subsidy go down a little bit in future years. And in those particular budget cycles, the school portion of the tax levy would go up proportional to the drop in EPS subsidy, while the municipal tax levy would stay the same. So it is offset. If we retain these revenues in this budget cycle, and council is at their discretion to approve, to vote down this motion, because the tax levy is set by the assessor based on what the municipal appropriation is, based on TIF transfers, and based on a calculation of the valuation of those TIF districts versus the mill rate that's set. So all of that is not set until council approves or votes down this motion. However, there was messaging to the citizens in the spring that we were going to come in very low on the net tax levy increase, and voting down this resolution would change what they see in their tax bills.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, my understanding is that the EPS formula is going to change about 50 cents for every dollar that we move, right? That we were saving about 50 cents. And so there's going to be a substantial change in the school side tax over time, as I understand it, if we do this. And I'm wondering if we've really modeled out the net effect to the taxpayer. We save them money this year, but I'm worried that we're taking savings this year at an increased cost in the future. Right? We're going to be paying back this decision for several years going forward in order to maintain a low tax rate this year.
We could model that out. The loss of EPS subsidy on an absolute basis, 50 cents on the dollar, would only occur if the City of Saco were the only municipality to grow in the coming years. So if all municipalities have some valuation growth, now what we're talking about is if the EPS funding from the state is going up a little bit, we're losing theoretical 50 cents on the dollar versus what we could have had if we captured our valuation and the state increases their formula. In other words, if the state increases their total of funding for schools, we would be leaving money on the table, but the absolute EPS subsidy amount that comes back to the city would not go down. There's also the consideration of student headcount, so if you add students to your school district, your EPS subsidy would still go up. Maybe it would have gone up more if you'd done more TIF valuation capture, but again, the absolute EPS subsidy number isn't necessarily going to go down because there's multiple factors. What I can do is I have done, I have created a model of the EPS formula, and so I could model out a couple of different scenarios for council to consider. However, we are running up against tax commitment time. So if council were to table or vote down this resolution this evening, we would probably have to commit at a 7% net tax levy just to make our first due date.
And has the schools been consulted on this at all? Because it's going, as it affects the EPS formula, I'm wondering if they've had the opportunity to weigh in and talk about any concerns that they might have.
I mean, the school was part of all of these budget presentations, and we had ongoing conversations with the school district. They did not pressure us to retain the valuation capture because the net tax levy impact would have been so significant to the taxpayers that it could create, have created blowback that would affect both the city and school budgets. And I think we were both working towards a smooth adoption process in this budget cycle. Certainly in modeling the EPS subsidy formula, I could review it with Superintendent Ray and Director DiDonato. They're both very familiar with the formula and could let me know if my assumptions are I would say in this year, though, you know, should the resolution be voted down, there will be a significant net tax levy increase, and we did not necessarily have qualified projects that we could shift from the general fund. There wasn't a way to offset that increased TIF transfer by reducing the general fund appropriation. So this would be an absolute increase to tax levy for fiscal year '24.
Okay. Thank you. I have some more comments for later, but that's under my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Purdy, then Counselor Archer?
Thank you. Yeah, so I had some concerns about this. But I was able to speak with Director DeJardins earlier, and long and short of it, I'm okay with it as a one-time thing. I don't want to see this being the norm because it's going to lead to more problems down the road. I am really concerned with the order that this was done, and we've, we approved a budget, yet we're not doing this until, you know, two, three months after the budget was approved, which just doesn't seem right to me. And I understand that, unless I'm mistaken, that $200,000 for the School Street was included in the budget as revenue as well. So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse on some of this stuff. So in the future, I would like to see these kind of housekeeping things done before we actually vote on a budget. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
So I did want to provide some additional information regarding the timing of this particular resolution. It is not possible to craft the resolution to determine the return of funds until the assessor's department has provided me with the valuation numbers for commitment, and they did not have those valuation numbers until the end of June. So it would be impossible in any budget year to have this resolution prepared for the budget cycle because it occurs in advance of when valuations are set. So rather than trying to craft the resolution at that time, because we did not have the valuation numbers, we simply set a target for what use of TIF funds would be with the anticipation that return of funds would occur after we had the final property valuation numbers. It is possible the property valuation numbers could have been lower, in which case we would have had less of a return, or they could have been higher, in which case this resolution would have been higher. So that comes down to the timing. In terms of the sale of 12 School Street, that was a determination in the city administrator's budget, again, to keep at the absolute minimum possible the net tax levy increase for our taxpayers. It's a bit of a smaller impact for the taxpayers versus the return of TIF funds, of course, but we were trying to reach for every revenue source possible and did try to disclose that in the budget presentations. But, you know, of course, we can always do better on that and make sure that it's really clear to council where those revenue sources are so the council can have the conversation at whatever point in the budget cycle feels most appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is, is that the 28% that we're going to be returning is based on funds that we have available that we didn't, we're not planning to spend, correct?
That's correct, yep.
This isn't for you, but for me, wouldn't have made sense, not for you, wouldn't have made sense for the council and the city to discuss possibly using those funds to other projects that we may have felt beneficial, kind of how we went through the ARPA process. For example, right now, we're having a discussion soon on the School Street. We could use TIF for that. We've talked about sidewalks. We could use TIF for that. And again, rather than doing it this way and trying to catch up or undoing what council already approves, that's how I look at this. This is undoing what we approved for the school budget or for the annual budget, my apologies. I'm not interested in both of these here because, again, I think that we could collaboratively come up with creative ways to spend some of this money that we have available to us, which will not affect, because if we spend it, then it would have no impact. Is that accurate?
If you were to spend the TIF amounts, it would be an additional $2 million to the tax appropriation. So certainly, if council votes down the resolution, council does have the ability and discretion to amend the TIF district budgets. Typically, we've done that with a single motion because it's not a direct council appropriation and could expend those funds, you know, on various projects. In the case of 12 School Street, as a finance officer, I'm always going to recommend that when you have a project cost close to or above $1 million that you bond it and then use TIF funds for the bond payments. There is the question too of project scope and direction. As a teen center specifically, it would not be TIF qualified. However, we could reshape the scope and nature of the project to be TIF qualified should council wish to appropriate TIF funds for that. So...
How could it not be used as a, it's a public facility, a public, adding event space, adding things does contribute to stronger economic viability downtown.
Certainly, if event space were the primary project directive...
Upstairs isn't an event space.
Yes.
And that's actually why we need the sprinkling, because we really don't need the sprinkles if we don't hold at venues there. If we do not hold, I can't remember the terminology, if we don't hold public events upstairs, that leaves downstairs available. You just close it off. So, I mean, that's why I really wanted to have solid conversations with the School Street. And now this is because we do have, and again, I'd recommend not spending $2 million on one item. I got that. And again, it wasn't a million. It's saying it just needs about $300,000. $200,000 has already been approved by council for ARPA. We'd be talking about taking 100 here, 100 there. What if we looked at the holistic approach to the city of small projects that need to get done over the next few years, 100 here, 50 there? If we're not putting it in one budget, like to the taxpayers, I could see this, instead of doing it this way, I could see using it that way. It still doesn't have that negative effect, but still is authorized and valid use, ways to improve our city.
Certainly. I did want to clarify on the point regarding ARPA funds. As part of the initial motion regarding 12 School Street, council in March of 2023, council did direct staff to reappropriate the $200,000 previously budget for 12 School Street to other recreation projects. And so ARPA has been fully budgeted without any funds directed towards 12 School Street. So at the time, council approved a repurpose of funds, but not to sell 12 School Street. I did look at the supporting documentation regarding, again, the discussion of 12 School Street back in March. It did seem from the supporting detail that $908,000 of the project cost was required to meet code. So I just want to clarify that from the documentation I was looking at. That did not include about $200,000 related to roof and exterior work. Certainly, if we retain the building, we will have to put a new roof on it and fix some of the deteriorating exterior within probably five years of putting the building into service. So I think it's important to count those project costs identified as part of the overall project scope of keeping the building. Even from an external assessment, I think, you know, the lay observer can see that the roof and some of the exterior needs a little bit of love.
So where does the variation from a January 18th done by Port City Architecture that states $300,000, $350,000, were they not accurate? Because I don't see a significant change within a month and a half.
The final report prepared by our facilities director was presented on March 20th, 2023. So I'm not sure if, I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't see the documentation in the January agendas. I was looking at them, but certainly, I'll take a second look at that. I was reviewing the March 20th documentation presented to council, which had a total required project cost of $908,000 just to meet code requirements.
For historical purposes, I don't know if the 2018 report took into consideration the damage that was done.
No, this is a report published January 18th of this year.
Oh.
So, yeah, not that, not the initial one that we originally had looked at. I'm going with January, there's, in your, the March, it's about a 300% increase within six weeks. So someone was very...
And that was in a January, that was the January 18th packet?
This is the City of Saco Parks and Rec feasibility report for City of Saco Maine, repurposing of 12 School Street, Saco Maine 04072 by Port City Architecture, January 18th, 2023. And all my data was based off this professional assessment.
Certainly. If you wouldn't mind sending that over to me, that would be great, just so I can cross-reference it with additional documentation presented to council. Thank you.
Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. Counselor Archer, do you have the very last page, which is Director Roth's?
It says Summerio's.
Which shows the 908. That's the one that I have that was provided me from Park and Rec.
No, let me find it.
It's the very last page, and it's a spreadsheet breakout that was created for 908,000. And again, that's where we're getting the 1.2 potential because 9.8 is the recommended, and then using any contingency above and beyond that may need it, we came up with a...
No, I'm looking at page 14 of that report. Literally, it's total required for required code, 332,000, and recommended, 244.
Yes, I have that, but after, then there's an additional page that was provided by Don Roth. That is not included on your copy?
No, it's here as well, but it's very confusing that they would have, why would they tell you one thing and then present you different data? So this 12 School Street is city data, then? Then how to get into their feasibility report if it's our data?
The feasibility report is the very bare minimum. And as Director Salas just said, the roof was not really included at cost. The elevator was not included at cost. It was just the estimate, or to have it researched. That 908 is the more accurate cost, as it was presented to me. But again, you know, that we can bring up during the workshop.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, because I'd like to know if, is page 19 internal or is it external? We paid for this study. I don't think it was volunteered.
That would be more information for Director Summer, possibly. And again, at the workshop, we can bring in Don Roth for his evaluation of it, if need be, or... But that's the amount that was presented to us.
I just see extreme variance here between professional and then internal. It's hard to make a decision when you don't have, when the information's conflicting.
So this is very good, robust discussion, but we're getting back onto the 12 School Streets topic, and we need to kind of come back into this agenda item, which understandably is talking about revenue...
It was connected. It was about TIF funding to help alleviate the cost.
I understand.
Bring it back.
I just want to bring it back a little bit. So any further discussion on this item? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. A comment, and then I guess another question for Director Salas. Counselor Archer's point, I think, was I see substantial projects that could benefit from TIF funding. Well, we're discussing the downtown TIF district now. I know we had concerns about funding for Main Street Saco. We have a huge amount of economic development needs. We have a huge amount of transportation needs and active transit needs downtown alone. There's beautification projects that we undertake on a regular basis, including the brick sidewalks. Our economic development department is largely funded by TIF districts, and I'm sure could use additional support. I view the downtown needs to be substantial, and I view the transit needs to be even more substantial, and I'm much more familiar with those. You know, H Friendly's Last Mile project, vehicles and staffing for that, the need for sidewalks, the need for bus travel to Camp Ellis, the need for bike lanes, the need for signaling, the need for left turn lanes towards ecology schools. We have a huge amount of transportation and transit needs, and the lack of approvable or TIF relevant projects in this budget, I think, is something, something that we clearly need to amend in the future in order to put these dollars toward their best use, given simply what I find to be the substantial infrastructure needs of our city. And then my question is, if we choose to table this today, what are the consequences to the taxpayers in Saco? Is there a chance to bring this back to council before the tax rate would have to go up?
We are out of time in terms of tax commitment, so council could vote to amend the tax due dates, which were set by council for the first Friday in September. Should finance and assessing be provided an additional month before the first tax due dates, then we could go back and provide some of the modeling questions. Certainly, council could determine if they want to make an amendment to the FY 2024 budget, and then we would just adjust the return of TIF funds based on those amendments so that, again, we're sort of threading the needle on what the true council, you know, approved appropriations are versus surplus TIF valuation capture. But we would need to take some action this evening to amend, to either drop this resolution or to amend tax due dates. Otherwise, we would have to move forward and commit to meet the deadline. would have to move forward and commit to meet the deadline.
Thank you.
Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. So, I mean, I, I certainly agree with, in particular, Councilor Berman's assessment, as I did several weeks ago, in these, in regards to the TIFs or better usage of the TIFs. And I do recognize that city staff has done a phenomenal job over the years, certainly far better than, you know, my early time on council at maximizing the use of those funds. I am inclined to support this, as, again, going back to the budget process, I stated at that time to council that there needed to be understanding that what we were actually doing was reallocating these funds to lower the mill rate. Now, perhaps I wasn't fully clear to the rest of council, but I fully understood it and moved forward, you know, in, in the sense with that understanding. But you've heard me state previously, and I probably will continue to state it until it blew in the face. The downtown TIF, that district, there was a redevelopment plan that was submitted to the state as part of that application that clearly spelled out what those funds should be utilized for. And I would, again, encourage this council and future counselors to stick to that plan or amend the plan and, you know, find new uses. But 2017 was when we approved that, or however many years, five years later, I've yet to see what I thought we were approving as a counselor, the improvements in the downtown. Have we made some? Sure. But, again, you've heard me say it, I can show you sidewalks all over the place that are tripping hazards, ADA noncompliant. That's what those funds were for. We lack, you know, attracting economic development in the downtown. I mean, I go on and on. I won't. I think I've spoken enough tonight. But I just, again, reiterate the fact that I would very much look forward to some kind of goal-setting process so that city staff has a direction instead of the way we've proceeded the last five years, which is council, I guess, quickly breezes over supping, goes, okay, gets approved. I prefer a more in-depth review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
No.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
No.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston? Oh, boy. Let's break this tie. Yes. The yeas have it, four to three, and therefore, this will proceed. As read, I do think that we should just have the city solicitor look at it because of the simple fact that it's appropriations, and I think that that has to be done by a five vote.
That was.
A majority of council. And I want to look into that as a parliamentarian, but for the most part, at this moment in time, the yeas have it, and we'll get, we'll get consideration on that. Moving on to item D on page 23, a transit-oriented municipal development and tax increment financing district assigned to... Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. The City of Saco would significantly increase the property tax rate if 100% of taxes paid on the captured assessed values in the transit-oriented TIF district were to be transferred into the district. This motion returns 28% of transit-oriented development TIF district revenues for the fiscal year 2024 budget year. Be it ordered that council approve the second and final reading of the resolution titled "Reducing Captured Value Percentage of the Transit-Oriented Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District." I move to approve the resolution.
Motion's been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion? Council Archer?
I'll be brief for brevity. Same arguments as the last one. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Again, similar to the previous item, Councilor Purdy?
Yeah, everything, yeah. The discussion's already been had, but just for clarification, what are we talking for a dollar amount, 28%, but what's that equal in dollars?
That would be $187,282.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing nobody seeking recognition. Roll call vote, Council Archer?
No.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
No.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The yeas have it, again, with the same kind of caveat that we are going to have this looked at, just to make sure it passes the charter. That concludes the action items this evening, so that'll bring us to item 10, new business. Up first is item A, you, in your packet. You all received some updates to the city code, chapter 201, for fire prevention revisions. Before we get into it, and we're going to have a presentation from Captain, Deputy Chief Pendleton, but before we get into it, is there anyone who wishes to be the liaison for this item? Councilor Gunn, thank you. And now, we will hear from Deputy Chief Pendleton.
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor, and chief administrator, as I'm going to call my boss going forward. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you on the new business. I'm pleased to be before you to respectfully request your consideration for changes to chapter 102. It was misprinted as, as 201, I think, Mr. Mayor. But chapter 201 is the fire prevention section of the city code. Real quick, let me thank Deputy City Planner Shannon Chisholm and Solicitor Tim Murphy for some of the assistance they've provided to the Fire Department thus far in this process. Please know that on, on many occasions, over the past several or even more years, the Fire Department has thought about, looked at, reviewed chapter 102. However, this is really the first opportunity that we've, we've had or that we've taken to come before you to, to talk about it. Fortunately, there's not a whole heck of a lot to it, so hopefully won't take up a lot of your time and/or need a lot of your consideration. But, again, chapter 102 consists of five relatively short articles, and the requested edits are somewhat limited in scope of what you need to consider. Some of the highlights for the changes we're asking you to consider include, are intended to accurately reference the appropriate additions of codes and standards to add to refined definitions, to add language that's consistent with main water guidelines, and, and to edit language required, I'm sorry, regarding commercial and residential sprinkler systems. Article 1, which is the fire code, is, is likely the most important section we need to be updated. Currently, article 1 references 1993 National Fire Prevention Code, the ninth edition, which was published by building officials and code administrators. Many of us know that as the Boca Code. If you've been around for a while, you, you've heard of the Boca Code. This particular code is not really in use any longer. The, the latest I could find for a publication was 1996, and certainly in, in our area, the state of Maine as well, it's, it's not really referenced. So, we need to, to, to make our article 1 accurate. So, in place of Boca Code, we should have noted the current 2018 edition of the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Code. It's called NFPA, NFPA 1 for short, or in the public safety business anyway, or code enforcement. But, but believe me, as we've moved along over the years, we have been referencing NFPA 1 and not the 1993 Boca Code I mentioned. But to have a proper reference to NFPA 1 is very important in, in, in that although it might not contain all the information needed when addressing or researching a life or fire safety concern that, that someone has, whether it be the, the Fire Department, code enforcement, a developer, or, or the general public, it, it does direct you to one or more of the many other NFPA codes and standards that are appropriate for the top, the topic you're considering. So, so basically, you, you start your search by going to NFPA 1. It typically will give you a little bit of information, then it'll tell you to go here and there and, and the other codes. So, it's, it's critical that our, our customers know they can go to the correct document with the correct addition and start their, their search or their investigation. In adopting the 2018 edition of NFPA 1, we will have the correct source in line with the state fire marshal's office. So, so that's what they use, and we usually are in line with the state fire marshal on the, the code and the addition, so there's not any discrepancy there. But again, that's the initial reference you might want to go to. And in addition to that, and I noted in the, the narrative you have before you, that with all new technology coming out, oftentimes, unfortunately, the technology comes before the guidance, so to speak, so they're playing catch-up. But tech, typically, if a new technology comes out, someone, including NFPA, will have to develop the code, and then they bring it into NFPA 1. So, once again, you can go there to see information on the new technology. So, again, we want to make sure our code points to NFPA 1. Some, some of the examples I gave you are at least referenced in NFPA 1, but there's something new coming along all the time that we want to make sure, again, the code is appropriate for us. Other proposed edits to article 1, the fire code, include reducing the measured volume of commercial buildings for which a fire sprinkler must be installed, and adding residential fire sprinkler language for one and two family dwellings. The reduction in the volume that I mentioned, and is indicated from 200,000 cubic feet to 100,000 cubic feet, is in regard to commercial buildings that are not necessarily required to have a sprinkler system. So, there are, there are some occupancies, like storage, some storage, mercantile business, even industrial, that don't require a sprinkler system per NFPA 1, or another document that I don't, that's mentioned, but I'm not going to talk too much to about tonight, is NFPA 101, which is the life safety code. So, before my time, maybe before the, the chief's time, the city at least put a number in there to try and capture those, those bigger commercial properties to have a sprinkler system. And that number was 200,000, which, which is a lot of volume. So, I'd, I'd like to see it reduced to the 100,000. And then, that's not a number I necessarily pulled out of the air. I've checked Gorm and Scarborough at a minimum. I, I have done the same thing in the past. The installation of residential fire sprinklers in new one and two family dwellings is not new to Saco. April 11th, 2023, marked the two-year anniversary of the implementation of the updated subdivision ordinance that Emily and others worked diligently on for quite some time. The ordinance includes the protection of these one and two family dwellings and their occupants with residential fire sprinklers within new subdivisions. The Fire Department wishes to expand the inclusion of residential sprinklers to all new homes. The, the second of the five articles that's probably most, not necessarily in Portland, but, but has the most changes per se, is article 5, which contains updates regarding the design standards for which main water uses, for hydrant selection, installation, and placement to some extent. Our, our section or our article 5 had this particulars, like the type of hydrant, the size of the openings, the particular things like that. And obviously, those are subject to change to whatever main water decides to do with, with their hydrants and all things related to. So, you'll see we just pretty much redlined almost everything, saying just refer to main water specifications and design standards. So, that should help prevent any confusion with a, a developer that comes to town, you know, seeking what he needs to do or she needs to do for, for fire hydrants. Those are kind of the highlights. Real quick, you know, in conclusion, the Fire Department looks forward to receiving any comments, concerns, questions you have, and trying to get you prompt answers, with, with a goal to restore chapter 102 to a current, clear, concise city code, or part of the city code, I should say. Is there anything we can address tonight?
Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Chief. I appreciate all of the updates and the efforts in making this clear and, and keeping the citizens of Saco safer. But my only question is about the automatic sprinkler systems for one and two family dwellings, the residential piece. And my understanding is the current subdivision code requires that only of new subdivisions on public water. And this would require it for all units, whether on public or private water, whether part of a new subdivision or not. And my question is, is that the intent? And second, is it feasible with an average residential well system to, to power a residential sprinkler?
Sure. The, the current subdivision ordinance calls for sprinklers in rural and nonrural. So, so all homes in any new subdivision currently.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Any other questions on the redline documents that have been put in front of you to update chapter 102 to be compliant with today's standards, not the standards of the past? No questions? Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel, if you think of anything between now and then when you see this again, please email city administrator, interim city administrator, Duross, or deputy chief Pendleton to get those items looked at before it comes to council. With that, we'll move on to new business, item B, and that's analysis of open space, 32 Market Street. And we're going to hear from Glennis Salas, director, budget director, and Emily Cole Prescott, city planner.
Hello again. So, the question of 32 Market Street came up in our affordable housing workshop. 32 Market Street had come up a couple of times in emails that Emily and I had communicated on, and Emily, communications that city planner had had with council. There had been some communication about the use of open space bond issuance at some point in the past to assist in the cleanup of the property. I was interested in pursuing the supporting documentation to find what was available in our financial system history. And I did pull, I loaded some of the archived data into our financial system and was able to go through an itemized list of the transactions related to the use of open space bond funds. And it seemed to me, from the detail that I could find, that most of those funds were indeed used to purchase property. Most of the purchases did reference map and lot numbers. I double-checked. The map and lot numbers did not match the map and lot number related to 32 Market Street. There were some residual funds between 50 and 100,000 around the time that I started with the city in 2017. Those have been moved to a dedicated capital project funds, and Director Summer used those for a couple of parks improvement projects. Specifically, when I observed the timeline of the use of funds, the information that I received from city planner was that the cleanup for 32 Market Street occurred in 2010, 2011. I could not find any transactions related to the use of open space bond issuance for that particular time period. And, like I said, it didn't seem like those older transactions were related to cleanup project funds. So, that leads to probably the next logical question, which is why was council told, as I'm sure that council was, that open space bond issuance funds might be used in the cleanup, but then they never were? I cannot personally speculate, because of course I wasn't here. This is many years before I started. However, I do know that when putting together a project of significant cost, oftentimes, there are multiple funding mechanisms that are considered to be put into play to ensure project completion. Sometimes, the project comes in less than the anticipated cost would be, and therefore, not all funding mechanisms are needed. Also, potentially, new funding mechanisms arise. Also, potentially, new funding mechanisms arise that eliminate these, perhaps in the space of open space bond issuance. Again, that's just speculation on my part. I don't really have enough information about the cleanup itself to be able to trace those expenditures in the history in our financial system. Did you want to add anything?
The purpose of bringing this forward, my understanding, is just to kind of clarify what we've found so far, and then also to ask, you know, councilors with longstanding history, if there's other conflicting information, if you could just send it our way, and we'll just kind of research it, close a loop on it. So it's really just to follow up on a workshop discussion, make sure we have some information, at least share what we were able to find so far.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council on any of the information that's been put in the packet? Presentation, Counselor Hatch, and then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. First of all, I can tell you that when this parcel came up for conversation relative to an affordable housing project, I was very much in favor of utilization of that parcel for that purpose, and that my vote was swayed by the comment that we may violate the bond requirement. So I really appreciate, I can imagine this took you more than five minutes to put together. So having had to do this kind of research myself in the past, a lot of work here, and I really, from my own personal perspective, want to thank you for that, and it certainly helps me kind of rethink my own personal position on the utilization of that parcel, because I do think it had some very high level of appeal for an affordable housing. I think we were talking about an over 55 complex to some extent, but that was just an idea that was being bannered around. Doesn't alleviate the fact that I think there were other concerns about easements for the Eastern Trail and all that stuff, but the fact that we can come back and talk about that, I think, is a good thing. So thank you for that.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, I appreciate you guys digging into this. I mean, my experience with this predates my time on council, just as a member of the public. I was there when the council in 2011, their motion was to expend these funds from the land for Saco's future bond. Now, as has been indicated clearly, and again, I trust the process that was used, clearly that didn't happen, but when this came back to council in 2016, when I was a counselor, I asked the question, was this appropriate use of these funds? I didn't receive an answer. I moved forward with extending the development agreement between Saco and Bedford Housing at that time. It's come up several times since then. I've, again, questioned whether or not this was appropriate. I later discovered that Attorney Murphy had weighed in and determined it was an inappropriate use of the funds, so that sent off, you know, a much larger alarm to me. But again, it seems rectified to me. I certainly accept the results. I do still question, though, how these funds were expended, if it wasn't done by that council order, and clearly, nobody's here to answer that question. And I would just hope, you know, moving forward, if council designate the expenditure of funds, we're sticking to that actual motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Yeah, not to continually repeat things that everybody else has already said, but thank you for the information, because I know this was, that was a major sticking point for me when this issue came up earlier. So thank you for all your work.
Okay. And if, Counselor Johnston?
I would just add that, as Counselor Hatch indicated, there were some other outstanding issues that myself and other councilors had and members of the public. So if city staff is seeking some kind of direction on this, I think that this is another topic that makes sense to workshop the future of this particular site. Fortunately, you know, this is a parcel that prior council moved through, that Chapter 81 review, and ultimately, didn't just sell off the property, they were waiting to have an actual proposal before them. So again, I just add that tidbit.
Thank you. And again, as staff has indicated, if you have anything further, please reach out to them so they can continue the good work to try to identify irregularities from the past. Moving on, thank you very much. Moving on to Item C, Charter Amendment Discussions. Counselor Johnston, you've put in a charter amendment for review, and this is the council's opportunity to hear it before it goes through the process for consideration and actually go to referendum vote. Counselor Johnston, I'll give you the floor.
All right. Thank you. So I guess, since it's somewhat lengthy, it makes sense for me to read it and then give my explanation. So specifically, the amendment is to Section 2.07 Powers and Duties of the Mayor, Letter D, which is appointments. The, as it reads, or as I'm proposing, is the mayor shall appoint and the city council confirm all members of municipal boards, committees, commissions, or other municipal positions created herein or that may be created, be hereafter created, of the city of Saco. All candidates interested in serving on a municipal board, committee, commission, or other municipal-appointed position created herein or thereafter, or may be hereafter created, shall be a resident of the city of Saco for one year prior to the date of appointment by the mayor and confirmation by the council, and must be domiciled in the city of Saco throughout their term. All candidates shall apply for consideration for appointment by application filed with the city clerk. So with that first paragraph, some of you will remember that last year I had submitted some changes that didn't garner, I guess, support from council while I was away in Florida. So I've, again, attempted to remove some of this vagueness or ambiguity from this section by clearly spelling out a process that is not present in the charter today. I feel it clarifies that it is the intent of the mayor to appoint members to every position that is created by the elected body or may be created in the future, and attempts to forward-thinking, to be forward-thinking and ensure appointments are brought forth. So, you know, presently, it just says municipal boards and commissions. We have several committees, positions, we may in the future call them something else. My hope was to just, again, make this so that in the future, we're not questioning whether that is the mayor's authority. Secondly, it, I add the residency requirement, which presently exists in code for some positions or committees, but isn't in charter, and we've had instances in the past where there was question of residency, so my attempt was to clarify what is residency and attach a, what I view as a commitment to the city of at least a year you've lived here before, you know, trying to participate in city government, which I have found is in line with many of our fellow communities. So then, the second paragraph, if an appointment has not been made by the mayor and confirmed by the city council within 30 days from the date of vacancy, or a candidate fails to be confirmed by the majority of the city council, the city council shall then proceed to fill the vacancy based upon applications received to that date. If in the event no candidate fulfilling the vacant membership has applied, the mayor shall provide the, be provided the opportunity to appoint within 30, another 30 days. If after 60 days from the date of vacancy, no candidate has been appointed and confirmed, city council should then proceed to fill the vacancy. So currently, the charter reads, if an appointment has not been made by the mayor, within 30 days from the date of vacancy, the city council should then proceed to fill the vacancy. It's never been clear, long before I was on council, what's the process for that, and it has come up in past instances, and this, you know, again, tries to clarify that process. We've followed a process of applications being submitted to the city clerk, but it's never been set in stone. This is an attempt to ensure that that's how we will go about filling an applicant, or filling the vacancy. Again, overall, this, you know, attempts to, you know, ensure that we have timely filling of vacancies, I personally feel it's a disservice to the community to have extended vacancies, which throughout my time on council, we have had instances of through every mayor I've served under. This is an opportunity, again, to ensure that within 60 days, we're going to make every effort to ensure those vacancies are filled. And then lastly, I've added, a vacancy in the membership on a municipal board, committee, commission, or other appointed position shall be determined upon the occurrence of any of the following: the death of a member, the effective date of the resignation of a member, the expiration of the term of office, three unexcused absences during a one-year period, the removal by city council for having engaged in misconduct, criminal activity, or for violating the city code of ethics, conduct of the city, or otherwise acting in violation of their oath of office, and six, no longer domiciled in the city. A member may resign by submitting a written resignation to the chairperson, the mayor, city council, and the city clerk for the resignation to be valid. The resignation may not be withdrawn, and the member's office shall become vacant on the date the resignation was received. So currently, we have no understanding of what a vacancy is. This is an attempt to, again, lay out what a vacancy is, when it, when and who will be notified, because again, if charter currently requires that council will move forward with filling of a vacancy in the event the mayor has not done it, there is no indication to how council will be informed there is a vacancy. So in essence, if a mayor does not decide to inform city council, he can hold that vacancy open for as long as he, she, they may see fit. So again, just an attempt to kind of clean up language that I've had, I've viewed problematic from before I was on council.
Thank you. Any discussion on the proposed charter amendment by Counselor Johnston, Counselor Berman, then Counselor McPhail?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Johnston. I understand what you're trying to do. I like it, I support the intent of your amendment. The only one thing I wanted to discuss was about the vacancies and when they become effective. You clarified that really well for resignations, but other things, such as three unexcused absences or being no longer domiciled in the city, may I suggest that the vacancy began when the city clerk is notified of such an event. Otherwise, the mayor may not know there is an opening until more than 30 days after those events have occurred. And then, the other thing I was thinking about that maybe doesn't belong on this amendment, but maybe good city practice, is if we start keeping a list of board vacancies on the website as they occur, so citizens know which ones are available to apply to. Right now, we have the list of boards and commissions, ad hoc committees, and other things citizens could apply for, as well as a link to the board application page, but no indication as to which have openings or when those openings may occur, so citizens aren't guided as to which to apply for.
Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to see is some definition or council agreement on what an unexcused absence is. I know in the past, we've had some issues, so if we can clarify what that is, how long somebody has to tell their chair that they're not going to be there, but just some very specific details regarding what is an unexcused absent.
Counselor Gunn, then Counselor Archer, then Counselor Hatch. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions here. I wanted to, first of all, Counselor Johnston, I, the intent of this, all things being fair, is pretty solid, and under the vacancy section of number five, though, I must give you my compliments, as it does reflect language that I successfully added to the charter and that the voters approved a couple of years ago, that sort of strengthens our hand at the council level to remove members of our boards for misconduct by not basically delegating the authority to the boards themselves and making the boards police themselves, though. So I appreciate that that's codified here. I have sort of a, one, I have a, one thing I want to talk about, but one sort of rhetorical question, although it's not really rhetorical, though. The idea, let's see, where is it? Okay. Under section, under vacancy in the membership, Section 3, the expiration of the term of office. And I'm, I guess I'm, lack of a parliamentarian here, though, I'm kind of, I've always been kind of curious about this, and I've always gotten a debate about this with folks, that do we, has the city functioned currently under the assumption that a position remains filled by the incumbent member until a replacement is chosen, sort of like where the position becomes like a caretaker position? Has that been sort of the MO of the city up to this point, though? Because I've seen instances where it seems like there's the hard stop of the term goes to this point, and you must leave your board, commission, committee, et cetera. But if the board is purely advisory, unlike, say, the planning board that has statute authority, if they have the purely advisory committee, I have seen situations where board members will remain in their place as voting members until a replacement is chosen. And I suppose the intent of your amendment here would basically put a hard stop on that, that pretty much, no, it's like until, until the date that's in the appointment, when you're initially appointed, would that be correct assumption?
In a way. I understand what you're saying, and I think with respect to the planning board and zoning appeals, those that have some form of judicial review, there's a provision that allows them to stay on. The city's always followed it. The expiration of the term of office, otherwise, I'm applying to, you know, again, I don't want to say lesser of boards, but ones with advisory role.
Well, without the statute.
So that council is notified there's a vacancy. It's just another instance, and again, I've experienced this through all four mayors I've served under, where, and perhaps even the mayor themselves, might not have recognized that a term expired, and they hadn't notified council, and so therefore, you sat with several members not participating. So again, I think that, you know, city attorney could review your question, because again, I think we followed his, his own legal advice on, on planning board, or, you know, again, those other judicial bodies. But yeah, I'm not necessarily trying to put a hard stop there, because it ultimately, you know, impedes the effectiveness, or perhaps even the ability for that board to function. But it's more along the lines of ensuring that council and the rest, the public, as Counsel Berman pointed out, is knowledgeable to the fact that there is a vacancy and it has been created.
I would, I would certainly agree with your sentiments there, and my, my point of view, that if they do not have statute authority and they are purely advisory, that it avoids appointments falling under the radar, and you have a bunch of caretaker members, and the last thing I want to see is basically sort of a club mentality, where it's sort of like, ah, they're still members, and the mayor will get to it, though, when anyone who wants to, you know, serve the city, even if it's a particular niche appointment, though, find themselves blocked out by someone who just, you know, by statute shouldn't be there. So I can appreciate your point there, and as I say, I look forward to Tim Murphy's opinion on it, though, because, you know, putting a hard and fast date on the appointments is a, is a good reform, though, because again, it clarifies the issue outside the ones with statute authority, you know, who is legally a member and who is not, whether or not they're purely advisory or not. So I like that. Under the appointments, the first paragraph, I stand corrected, under the second paragraph, under appointments, if an appointment has not been made by the mayor and confirmed by city council in 30 days from the date of the vacancy, or a candidate fails to be confirmed by a majority of the city council, the city council shall then proceed to fill the vacancy, and your language, based upon applications received to that date. Now, while I understand the intent is obviously to clarify city council's responsibility once we get to the 30 days, and I think the rest of the paragraph does a great job of doing that, I would point out a concern that I have, based upon applications received to that date. And my point, my point I would make- And my point, my point I would make, for, you know, if you'll indulge me, is if the mayor has one application, three application, et cetera, I assume we would have access to that if we requested it as a council. And the mayor gets to the end of the 30 days, or hopefully before the 30 days, offers a candidate, and we vote them down. So now, we're past the 30 days, it's now on our choice. I wouldn't want to have a situation where, as a council, we would then be compelled to choose among the candidates who have already submitted, because at this point, we're all basically, the authority is passed on to us. And we've had instances in the past, though, I like to think, where counselors have known, hey, this person will be great for that appointment, maybe they should apply, and we're begging these people to apply, and they probably said, well, you know, I know someone else is applying, so I'm not even going to submit an application. Under this language, it would compel us to vote for any of the people who've already put out applications, when I like the idea that once the mayor's 30-day window passes, and he or she hasn't made an appointment, the clock starts with us, thus allowing us as individual counselors to basically ask people that we know from the public to serve, and of course, all you need is one other counselor to back you up, to go to the city administrator and put it on the agenda, and of course, one person could do it, four people could do it, et cetera, and the end, it's just for the, sort of the first pass the post, though, if we, whoever gets the first votes, when we have a vote on the city council, wins. And I think that would not tie our hands so much as having to rely on the applications that were previously submitted. Now, that's to say that we can rely on those applications, though, but if we know, sitting there individually, that there's a candidate out there, that we're just dying to get on the council, that we, since we all have an equal opportunity to submit somebody, at least as it's currently written, I wouldn't want to give that up, though, because by including the term "shall," it makes it seem like the council's pretty much, in that instance, tying its own hands and compelling us to vote for one person or the other, or whoever, whoever has the applications already submitted, that the mayor either passed on or the mayor just decided not to submit to council. So I wouldn't want to see the council in a position where we're forced to vote for two people. I mean, it could be a situation where the mayor looked at them and said, these people are apparently not qualified, therefore, I'm not going to submit them, and just by that one little "based upon applications received" at this date, it infers that it ties our hands to have to vote for one of those people, or at least put the vote out there. But by putting, by putting the term "shall, shall vote," it makes it seem as if we don't have really a choice in the matter, it's going to be one of those people, when, again, we might know of other candidates, and we would have 30 days anyway to appoint. So that was my concern about that one little, that section there. Aside from that, the rest of the paragraph, it's perfectly fine.
Thank you, Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two points that I'd like to just point out. Once, I consider this one minor, it's related to this written resignation, and it's, it's, the way it's presented, is that it's going to encourage people to resign and blindside us. For example, if someone was to submit a resignation saying, I'm going to resign at the end of the school year, it would go into effect that day, not the date that they intended. So it takes away someone's ability to give us notice. And so I'm not, again, I consider that one lighter, not, not as big as a deal, but I'm more for, if someone wants to inform us ahead of schedule, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with if someone said, I'm going to resign at the end of July 31st, that they can't withdraw it, because in that, once you put that resignation, you are then informing the city and the mayor to say, hey, you need to start looking for a placement, I don't want it to become wishy-washy, oh, I resign, I don't resign. So I'm okay with that, but I would want something that says, or, talk to the lawyer, talk, get some advice, but something to say that you can resign at a future date, and then that's the effective date. So it's either the future date, or if there's no date, then the date presented. The second part, where I have a little bit more concern, is related to the appointment, kind of on what Councilor Gunn had mentioned, but where I'm concerned is where it reads, if an appointment has not been made by the mayor and confirmed by the city council within 30 days from the date of that vacancy, this is the part where I am focused, or a candidate fails to be confirmed by a majority of the city council, the council then should proceed. So what could happen is, a majority of the council could just vote that person down so that they can get someone that's in the pipeline. So I would rather, and that's, I mean, if that happens, it happens, but that's how it's written, but I'd rather have the 30 days restart at the, when council denies, when it fails to provide that, that 30 days, it gives a chance a mayor another 30 days to produce a candidate. If that mayor does not, then you would continue as presented. But I feel that if a mayor presents a candidate that doesn't fail, I think they should have another chance to present someone else. And if it took 12, if it took 12 months, just candidate kept getting, so be it, then that's what's happening. But you should give the chance for, to cure, the mayor to cure that appointment, so. Those are my two points. Again, I consider that one more major, the other one, I just don't want to have people blindsiding us with resignations if they subdue it.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just a couple of points to add. One is the term domiciled. I think we all seem to understand what that is, but where we run into some confusion potentially is that it's supposed to be your permanent place of residence, so you can have more than one residence, but only one domicile. So I'm not sure how we can tie that a little more strictly to the city of Saco, whether it's a bona fide mailing address in the city of Saco, or a registered voter in the city of Saco, but I would like to see the term domiciled tightened up a little bit. And then I would also dovetail onto Councilor McPhail's comment about unexcused absences, and, and I look at it more from an attendance perspective. I think we should, we should, as part of the appointment process and the application process, an individual should understand, you know, when the meetings are, or how many there are, and some commitment to some level of attendance. So I'm not quite sure what that percentage is, but I think changing the three unexcused absences to a, a percentage attendance level would be a little bit easier to manage. And then lastly, the web link, I agree with Councilor Berman, I had put forth some, what I would suggest, were some improvements to the application process a while back, including some improvements to the communication of openings and the application form itself. Those seem to have fallen off track, so I'm going to try to resurrect those at some point during this process. Other than that, I thought you did a pretty good job of clarifying a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hatch. Mayor Doyle has stepped to the side to go to the podium to speak.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the council, well, there are some great things in here. I believe the language related to vacancy in a membership on a municipal board, I think that is a great addition to this. The rest, I believe, is trying to solve a problem that isn't there. And let me explain. There are many times, there are just not volunteers to fill these positions. There are many times that there's no applications in the pipeline. Now, I've been doing this for four years, and I've made every attempt to fill vacancies as they've come up. I understand that there's a couple that there's still no applications on. If you have somebody interested, tell them to fill out an application. And if it comes before us, again, those applications are not hidden, they're with the city clerk. The city clerk notifies me when there's an application that comes in. One of the things the city clerk also does is make sure that they're a resident, so they have to go through the process of making sure they're a resident. And how she does that is with a voter card, with a voter card, and then also where they're living, what they put down as an address. So there's definitely checks and balances that go into account when looking at different folks that want to serve. So again, if you look at paragraph one, shall be a resident of the city of Saco for one year prior to the appointment. If somebody wants to get involved, they should be able to get involved, regardless of the length of time they've been in the community, because everybody brings something of value to discussion. And while it may be a standard in other communities, and we're trying to be somewhat similar, I do believe that we are a city of inclusion. We actually adopted a resolution to say so, so we shouldn't then go around and put parameters that say, hey, you can't be involved because you haven't been here a X timeframe. Again, when you're dealing with volunteers, folks that aren't getting paid, folks that are putting in the extra because they want to, they should be able to be involved, regardless of their length of time in the community. Looking at paragraph two, again, you can, I think I said this last time, you can put certain days on there, you can put timelines on there, you can put whatever you want, but you know what? If there's nobody to appoint, what, what Council Archer said is going to happen, it's going to happen. You're going to have council that don't like certain people, so they vote it down just so they can get the opportunity to put somebody up. And again, if it's, if this kind of language is, has the intent of circumventing the mayor, then maybe you guys should be looking at a charter revision to actually, to get rid of the mayor's position and move to a council president form of government. But again, that's a decision, that's a discussion for a different day, but it's just something, if you're going to try to continue to limit the, the ability that the mayor has, whomever the mayor may be, that's going to be challenging when you're dealing with, there's not a ton of people banging down the door to be on boards and commissions. And again, the third paragraph, I do like the vacancy stuff, so I think that is helpful. I, I think that would have been helpful for me as an incoming mayor, that language would have been helpful. And then the fourth paragraph, again, these are volunteers, and we should thank them for their service and be happy that they're actually coming up and wanting to serve. So the last sentence, the resignation may not be withdrawn, and the member's office shall become vacant on the date of the resignation received. If they want to withdraw their resignation because they've decided that they want to stay on, again, we should not kick them out, we should welcome them, because there's just not a ton of people that are looking to be volunteers. So again, I'm not against the amendment in totality, I think there's some good stuff in there, but again, please take into consideration the person that has made these appointments, that has gone through this process with you many times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Hey, you know, like I said, this is a process, this is what I've submitted. I think there's, you know, several comments by counselors that should be considered. I could elaborate more in depth as to why I arrived at this language. I would point out, as I have, that I don't believe this is an attempt to circumvent the mayor, the language is in the current charter that says the city council shall then proceed to fill the vacancy. If we want to just allow all of this decision to be on the mayor, why don't we just remove that section of the charter? That would satisfy my issue I've had for several years, because it's not clear how we fill the vacancy, being council. It's not, oh, we're going to circumvent the mayor, it's a situation, I believe, that the people, you know, that first wrote this charter was to, again, ensure that we don't have a mayor that plays that game. And there's a history in Saco, going back to J. Haley Booth, that that's why it's in the charter, because this is the games he played with withholding certain vacancies until he found who he determined was suitable for the position versus interested applicants. So that's why, again, I have suggested that we fill that vacancy based on applications received to that date, whenever that date is. I mean, my goodness, we've got 30 days, this ordinance clearly, or this charter change clearly establishes when those 30 days start, so therefore, the mayor and council understands when an appointment should be made. And, you know, at that point, I mean, it's really on whoever is in the position of mayor to communicate with his counselors, to ensure he has the votes before putting them forth before a body. So in the rare instance that we don't approve something, which, again, I think I've only been privy to maybe three of those, the outcome ultimately ends up being what council decides. So if you have three or four applicants, the mayor puts one forth, he doesn't, or she or they, doesn't communicate with, with the council as to why that is who they feel should be put forth as, you know, an appointment, then really, it falls on, on the failure of the mayor, it's not on city council, to ensure that that vacancy is filled. So I understand why there might be concern about the language for, you know, or the situation where I guess a council conspires to pick their choice, but ultimately, it's, it's laid out in charter now that that could happen, it's just not clear what the process is. And that was really this attempt, and I added that if, in the event there are no candidates, as the mayor has, has, you know, stated, which I understand, that does happen from time to time, but also, the public not knowing there are vacancies, well, you may, I can, I can give you several instances where I know people that would have been interested, but they didn't know there was a vacancy. So again, ensuring that we're informing the public that vacancies exist, and that this isn't a good old boy networks of appointments, and you have to know somebody to get appointed, I think is beneficial to the city. But like I said, we're allowing, in the event there's no candidates that have applied, the mayor another 30 days to find somebody. I mean, realistically, you should be able to find somebody within 30 days. I'm sorry, I, you know, we may differ on that opinion, but I probably could fill just about every board we have, off people that have told me that they have interest in things. So again, gives you a 60-day window at that point, and then council fills, proceeds the vacancy. So it's not an attempt to circumvent the mayor, it's an attempt to ensure that we are actually filling these vacancies when we have applicants, and if we don't have applicants, as, as Councilor Gunn indicated, in the event at the end of 60 days, hey, maybe you know somebody that is indicated to you that didn't fill an application out, they're interested, and you can make that motion that night. But to continue on vacancies that go a year, or reappointments that go a year plus, and again, this isn't directly at you, Mr. Mayor, it's for mayors I've served under, I've had this instance occur, that I've had to go to them and remind them, hey, why hasn't this position been filled? Oh, I didn't know. Okay. Well, that's the impetus for this. Thank you.
Thank you. For everybody in the public, if you want to be on a board and committee, please fill out a board application on the city website, no matter if there's an opening or not, because that's the process of how we fill those openings. So again, if you want to volunteer for your community, please fill out a board application, and when there's an opportunity for a vacancy, you'll be considered by the mayor at the Any further discussion on this charter amendment? Councilor Johnston will be the liaison, you'll see this coming up as we start to get underway towards getting into September. So you'll see it in the August meetings. Any further discussions? No further discussions, moving on from new business to item 11, administrative update, interim city administrator, Duras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some announcements tonight. First is National Night Out. The Saco Police Department will be hosting National Night Out 2023 in conjunction with the city of Saco. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign promoting police community partnerships and neighborhood partnerships to make neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. The event will take place on Tuesday, August 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Thornton Park. The event will take place on Tuesday, August 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Thornton Academy. Please join us for free food, drinks, games, and a number of free activities such as bounce houses and obstacle courses and children's games. There will be a touch-a-truck display and meet and greet with public safety officials and city employees. Hope to see you there. I also have two bid solicitation notices to read. Both are from the Public Works Department. First is for a sidewalk tractor. The City of Saco is soliciting bids for a 2023 sidewalk tractor. Bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked sidewalk tractor. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, August 10th, 2023, at the Saco Public Works Department located 15 Phillips Spring Hill Road, Saco, Maine 04072. There will be a public opening of all bids received at that time. Any questions regarding the bid specifications should be directed to John Wentworth, Fleet Manager, at jwentworth@socomaine.org. The second bid solicitation is for a loader. The City of Saco is soliciting bids for a new 2023 wheel loader. Bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked loader. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, August 10th, 2023, at the Public Works Department, Saco, Maine. There will be a public opening of all bids at that time. Any questions regarding the bid specifications should be directed to John Wentworth, Fleet Manager, at jwentworth@socomaine.org. And finally, a save the date. There's a lot of information been printed, there'll be more coming. Harbor Fest, August 13th, in the Camp Ellis area.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? No questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Under council discussion and comment, there are two things, actually, I forgot to talk about earlier, under general. We did get word from school attorney Stockmeyer that the school bond will not go forward this November. It will be rescheduled to a later referendum because of the ongoing traffic mitigation challenges and studies that are being done with the Department of Transportation. So it will not meet the Department of Education's meetings to get on and get approved. So with that said, that is one thing. And then the other thing, in case it wasn't communicated, we did partner with, out of the $25,000 that was allocated in the budget process to collaborate with Biddeford, we did use a portion of that money to get into their affordable housing study that they were doing for a regional approach. And that was something that the Biddeford and Saco subgroup met and talked about and thought it was a good idea to look at a regional approach rather than just Biddeford on their own as far as affordable housing. So those are the only two things that I had that kind of jumped back into my memory, and I apologize that I didn't announce it earlier. Any further council discussion and comment? Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of my fellow councilors and the city administrator and mayor will indulge me, I have a statement I'd like to make. In the past couple of weeks, I have received a number of complaints from folks living in the vicinity of the three pump stations on the south side of Portland Road about the foul odor that is originating from the direction of a company on that road. For full disclosure, one of those complaints came from my landlord on behalf of several property owners where I live as well. As I can attest personally, as I am too aware of this odor, this issue has been a recurring one for the past several years. In my conversations with staff, I agree with their assessment that the issue seems to primarily reside with the company in question and that the issue is probably a combination of how they are choosing to treat their wastewater on site and when they are scheduling to release it into the sewer pipe. I want to take this time to express to my constituents in Ward 3 that I am confident in city staff's ability to continue to work with this organization or their parent company in finding a solution to this issue so that may remain, they may remain a constructive part of Saco's economy. That being said, the health and quality of life of residents and those that make their living adjacent to these pump stations come first. I repeat, they come first. Saco welcomes any industry that can enhance our economy and help alleviate the cost burden to local taxpayers, but not at the expense of the consideration and good neighbor standards that any resident should expect from a nearby business. It is certainly within the city's DNA for residents not to want to make a stink, no pun intended, about an issue that hopefully it will be eventually quietly fixed. While the folks in my neighborhood have waited and hoped for a solution long enough, to that end, in my capacity as a city counselor, and at this point speaking only for myself and my constituents, I am calling on the management of the company in question or their parent company to take whatever necessary steps they can to fix the problem that it is their responsibility to solve. As a company with local Bain roots, I would like to appeal to their sense of community and corporate responsibility that they have made a point of professing in their presentations to the public. Do not let this situation get worse before it gets better. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Any further council discussion and comment? Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Just with respects to Counselor Gunn's comments, I certainly understand, you know, what the situation, you know, the problems it has created for you personally and also all the members of the public that live out that way. I certainly cannot claim to understand what the situation is fully. I was involved early on in bringing that company to Saco rather in depthly. There was some discussion at the time about pre-treatment and potentially the need for its own treatment facility, if I recall correctly, maybe wrong. But ultimately, obviously, a solution needs to be found, and I would ask that city staff from wastewater and potentially members of, you know, the company present something to the city council because, as it's been indicated by public comment tonight, there's some unhappy citizens, and I would just like to better understand what the situation is and how we may go about finding a solution. It is in a TIF district, I don't know, and I'm certainly not suggesting that, you know, we make use of those funds if that is an option, though, I guess is what I'm saying as far as, but first, we need to know what the real problem is at council level versus just hearing that it smells. I understand. You know, I spent the majority of my life living downtown near an incinerator that stunk the holy hell. On a different topic, just looking for an update, I gotta stop writing my notes on the back of papers and losing them. Hybrid meeting status. I mean, it feels like years, I could be wrong, but I know council has allocated funds towards having a hybrid meeting process where residents at home can participate. I'm just looking for an update. We are in the new fiscal year, so it's something that I would like to get going, particularly since, you know, we're sitting here talking about not having members of the public that might know, or that might, or haven't applied to boards. Well, again, if we do more to engage with our citizenry, we might have more people interested in serving. And then additionally, just on tonight's comments by the public, and again, this is a much larger topic, but I just wanted to address from some of the public that spoke about the LDR, which largely is Ward 4, and, you know, why it is low density. Well, just historical perspective there, that dates back to the 1970s when there was no water in sewer. But through the years, water and sewer lines have been applied or installed throughout the entirety of that ward, or I stand corrected, scrimshaw lane may not be on sewer. But anyway, I'm just saying that that pattern has just existed largely because neighborhoods have come out and said, single family duplex only. And I can attest to that because I've lived it through both a comp plan update and the zoning ordinance revision process. So that's the reasoning, and I understand that, you know, some of these members are new to the community, but it wasn't specifically to state that, you know, the city has determined it's not developable, I guess, for a lack of a better term. I think as Counselor Hatch has pointed out, if you look towards consistency with the comp plan, it makes it largely clear that we should be having growth areas where there are water and sewer, that being one of them. Now, there may be other issues, but I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there for clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion and comment? Okay, that brings us to item 13 of the agenda this evening, that is executive session. Is there a motion? Counselor Hatch?
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, C. Acquisition of Property 2, C. Sale of Property, and C. Use of Property.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call, vote to enter executive session. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 9:41. Executive session will be upstairs in the administrator's conference room. If you have to go outside, please make it quick, or if you have to go use the facilities, again, please make it quick. or if you have to go use the facilities again, please make it quick.
Okay, we're coming out of executive session here. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on exiting executive session? Roll call to exit. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at ten twenty six. Moving on to item fourteen, report from executive session. We have three. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the city administrator to enter into a land transfer agreement to accept a parcel of land on Industrial Park Road adjacent to the existing public works facility. This land transfer to the city will be subject to completion of Phase One environmental assessment and entry into the main DEP brownfields program.
Second. Counselor Gunn's made a motion. Counselor Johnson, second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Counselor Johnson, you have a couple of motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Be it ordered that the city council approves the city administrator to extend the lease of the transportation center office space for a period of five years with Biddeford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Counselor Johnson? The Saco City Council grants permission to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with BSG Properties LLC for one forty-two Main Street in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand contingent upon the inspection period no later than four p.m. on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion's made by Counselor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at ten twenty-nine. Have a great evening, everyone.